Thank you. Welcome to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for 9:00 AM Wednesday, September 15th, 2021. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, it's citizen input, and we do have email input. So there's multiple emails from residents on the concept of vaccine incentives, which was the discussion some of our last few board meetings. So we were all receiving those. There's seven of them at this time on that same topic. Also, citizen input on a, it refers to Commissioner comment about redistricting and something about not being in coordination with Portland or whatever. It was one of the maps being proposed, and I did testify on this subject, but it's not my comment, so I don't know what they're referring to. And it was just a subject line that was sent to us. Yeah, so I don't have any other information on that.
I wanted to say that I appreciated that the large majority of those citizen comments on incentives were in support of incentives, and I still believe that that's something that's important for us, too.
Yep, didn't divide out, yeah, who was for or against. Understood. Okay, so this is citizen input. There's no one else in the room on this topic. So at this time, we'll move to the consent agenda.
I'll move, but I would like to pull item number two.
Okay. Do you support that? Okay. So that's a second. Pulling number two. Okay. Any other discussion? City non-commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Sure.
And chair votes, yes. So item number two is regarding consideration of a lease with Cascade Pier and Self-Help Center. This is a three-year lease with an option on property located at 1128 Northwest Harriman. Is there anybody that can speak on that subject?
That's the property right up here, the clubhouse, and it's an ongoing arrangement. They've been there for a long time. It does have a 60-day out clause, so it's a three-year lease, but we could terminate it on 60 days' notice.
Any comments, Commissioner?
Oh, I just, you know, they don't have the insurance attached. No, they used to have insurance documents attached, and they wouldn't be correct. And so then I was thinking, okay, so did they just, like, take them off so that I wouldn't compare and make sure that they were the right limits, that they were so designated in the document? Yeah, the insurance is not attached, and I just want to confirm that the insurance is, has been seen, and it is correct.
Legal hasn't seen it, but I assume Christie has, but I can check on that.
Please do.
So then, at this point, you're not in support of passing that?
Well, I am, but I just want to make sure that the insurance is, has been seen by legal, then.
Do you want to pass it confirming?
Insurance.
Insurance. So go ahead and make that motion.
I move that we approve document number 2021-692 for the lease with Cascade Pier and Self-Health Center, and ensuring that the insurance has been confirmed to be the proper limits.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? City non-commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes, yes. All right. At this time...
We did have someone wash their hands for citizen input.
Yes. So, yeah, citizen input is available. This is an open public meeting. So last meeting, I had talked about, you know, please join us in person if you're interested in testifying on any subject that's not on the agenda. That was just kind of trying to set the stage for that. Is there any thoughts from the other commissioners? I mean, it was just a policy that kind of evolving over time.
In this, in this period of heightened COVID transmission in our community, I think it's appropriate for us to still offer citizen input by Zoom or phone for a little longer.
So, you know, one of the realities of the situation, just like we had a discussion about a topic, and we got hundreds of emails on it, we could set ourselves up for a public, you know, windfall of input on any topic where people are going to ask for their three minutes, and we could be here for many hours. I mean, that's the byproduct of what we're talking about here. That's...
But you know what? In today's world, that's really okay, because so many people feel like they've been locked out of Salem, they've been locked out, and that's really not right. They are, we are serving because of the people, so...
Oh, and that's fine.
Yeah, I think it's important. It's, I don't care if I'm here that late.
Okay, yeah, as I say, it was just that concept and the fact that this is an open public meeting. So, and somebody could testify from anywhere in the world via video also. So, I mean, it's just, that's the yin and the yang of it. That's all I'm acknowledging. So, but with that, with, you know, commissioners' comments on this, if there's a raise hand feature in Zoom, we'll go back to citizen comment, citizen input on a topic that's not on the agenda, and offer that to whoever maybe have the raise hand feature. Oh, well, and this is a topic that was notified, so, so Mr. Ed, yeah. So you heard our discussion. This is City Councilor Ed Fitch, and I had put a note as other items, but since you want to get started, you did send us an email on a topic that I understand what's going on, so please share.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I thank the commissioners for their support of the Bethlehem Inn and Oasis Projects in Redmond. I think last week, the mayor talked with Commissioner DeBonne about the funding aspects of those two projects. And then last night, the city council deferred the city's contribution on those projects to first see if the county would be in a position to contribute more ARPA funds to those projects. Our next meeting is September 28th. I think your next meeting is September 27th. So my request would be that you look at that issue and put it on your agenda for the 27th to make a determination one way or the other. With these two projects on hold, it is presenting some problems, particularly for Bethlehem Inn. They would like to have their facility open by winter so that people who need shelter during that time will have that available. So the request would be if you could schedule this for September 27th to make some determination on that. That would be very much appreciated, and then we can address it on September 28th. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Great. Thank you very much. So, yeah, I did discuss this with the mayor of Redmond, and I've talked to many parties, working with Bethlehem Inn directly, and I did have this on just as other items today. So thank you very much for joining us and providing that citizen input as an elected councillor.
Yeah. Thank you.
I would love to ask councillor Fitch a question or two. I'm trying to understand whether, and I know that there's a diversity of perspective on the council, so you can kind of characterize or, you know, tell me what the aggregate is or tell me what the different perspectives are. But, you know, I'm trying to understand whether the council is interested in co-investing with the county in some of these facilities, or whether the council sees it as the county's responsibility to support these facilities and would prefer that, you know, only, only the county make investments.
So, a month ago, the county city council on a four-three vote voted to fund with ARPA monies, three projects, Bethlehem Inn for $450,000, Shepherd's House for $300,000, and then the Oasis Project for about $181,000. When it came time to do the budget adjustment, councillor Patrick asked for more detail before making a final decision, and also asked if we could inquire the county as to whether they could contribute more money as we have other projects that could be utilized for these ARPA funds. So it got put on hold, and I think that's when the mayor contacted Commissioner DeBonne. So there is an outstanding resolutions at the city council level to fund those two projects if there are no additional resources from the county. It is a contentious issue at the council level. There is at least one councillor who doesn't think the city should contribute money. Others are just waiting to hear back from the county, and they wanted more detail on these two projects, which were provided last night.
Thank you for that, councillor Fitch. I guess I would say that I am supportive of co-investments. The county has already made a pledge for the Bethlehem Inn project, and I would support an investment in the Oasis Village project. But really, the way that we're going to get these, these projects to the finish line is, is by co-investing. And there's been, not necessarily from Redmond specifically, but there, you know, a number of people have asked me recently, well, you know, what is the role of the cities in this issue, and what is the role of counties, or the county? And, you know, I keep saying to people, cities are, you know, cities create places where people live. Counties support wraparound services for, you know, to help people get on their feet. And that is the way that I see this. And I'm wondering if you have any suggestions for me to, on how to convey that perspective to your fellow councillors, so that, you know, I can, I can signal to them, you know, how I see this and how I intend to vote on these issues.
I can't speak for the council, but I just, my purpose today is really just stressing kind of the urgency of some determination, so that we can move forward with these projects one way or the other. I urge the commissioners to make a determination as to whether it's a co-investment or whether the county's going to take the lion's share of these investments. Like I say, I appreciate what the county's done already. Some councillors would like to have more, but it's, it's your call, and we just want to get this to where we aren't arguing about it every meeting, where we can make a final decision. And I would hope to do that on September 28th.
Thank you. Yeah, and I appreciate your, your advocacy for the community of Redmond to take an active role in these issues and try to move the ball forward. Much appreciated.
So I know you guys have a busy agenda, so thank you for giving me the time to speak with you this morning.
So one more con, comment to put in perspective. So there's a line item in the, kind of the, getting the doors open for that facility, you know, list of costs. It's $763,000, and that is the amount to basically upgrade, retrofit, safety improvements, ADA accessibility, and bathrooms for the facility that was purchased with state dollars. So it's a $2.4 million purchase of the facility, and 763 is to, you know, basically get it to a stable, known, safe state.
Are we talking about the Bethlehem Inn?
Bethlehem Inn opportunity in Redmond, yes. So then, so that's 763 plus, you know, another half a million dollars in furnishings for the building. So I'm just acknowledging that there may be a way to help Bethlehem Inn get to over a hump of getting the doors open, making sure it's safe, accessible, usable, and then, you know, kind of slice out the fact that, you know, the beds and, you know, facility, yeah, the rest of the stuff could be funded some other fashion. I'm just saying, there's a way possibly to slice this a little bit, too. And I would empower them, getting over that hump, to get the doors open, safe, and, you know, permitted by the rules and regulations of public facility in Redmond.
Thank you.
So, yeah, there's a request that we bring this on an agenda item for Monday 27th. We can do some homework between now and then, and I'd support having that discussion on that date.
So are you now saying that they really need 1.263 million, and that we've allocated $425,000 off of that?
450, yeah.
450? Okay. So now they even need more money than they were asking. They were asking for $900,000 originally.
Well, so, yeah, it was a $900,000 ask split by the city and the county.
Right.
And we were able to confirm our participation for half of that right away. And now, yeah, the city's gone, yeah, four to three, kind of back and forth. So that's what we've seen recently.
I see, I see Bethlehem Inn on the screen. I'm wondering if they wanted to provide citizen input as well.
She just happens to be here. So Gwen Wisling, and I spoke to Gwen. That's why I know some of the numbers. Thank you for joining us. This was going to be another item, but we're bringing it up front today.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity and also extending our gratitude for the funds that the county has put forth in our earlier request, the $900,000, which my understanding would be that the city would provide half of that, and the county step forward preemptively. To answer your questions, Commissioner Dare, the overall project is 1.3 for the upgrades and everything needed, which includes just everything to get it up and running, the furnishings, the kitchen, those items. And it is, we've gotten some funding to cover the, outside of the $900,000. So my request really, in speaking with Commissioner DeBonne last week, there was maybe a request we could somehow reduce the amount that was being asked. And we, unfortunately, this is, this is the bare minimum. There may be other cost overruns, but we're, our ask is still the remaining 450, and we feel that that's, you know, that we've already been billed for the 450, and we have a remaining $450,000 to go to finish the project. So whether the county can assist in any other ways, we only hope that we can provide you whatever information you would need, and that the city would understand that we are providing an important service to the city, and we want to be really good partners in that effort, just like Oasis Project, Shepherd's House, and all the other nonprofits that are dealing with this continued issue of homelessness.
So you're not asking us for the 813,000, then. You're asking us to cover the 450,000 that you thought was coming from the city?
I am here asking that there be some, some partnership, and it sounds like the county had already agreed and was hoping the city would do the rest. The city has now deferred it, asking whether or not the county has anything further that they're willing to support in this effort.
Yeah, so as I say, we can do our homework a little bit between now and our next meeting on Monday, September 27th, in support of this discussion and ask.
Yeah, and I'd definitely like to think about this a little bit more, but, you know, working on the principle of, of co-investing, but maybe the county carrying a little bit, you know, and not being quite a 50-50 type ratio, I would, I would support the county investing more than the initially committed 450,000, and also making a foundational commitment to the Oasis Village project in the hopes that, or with the request that the, that the city provide the remaining portion. And I don't, I don't know whether that's 60-40 or, or, you know, two-thirds, one-thirds, or what exactly that looks like, but I would hope that kind of the county coming forward with, you know, a larger proportion might encourage the council to look at that co-investment with us.
Okay, so a date's been set. This was another item that I had on my agenda and citizen input. So we got two birds with one stone here. Thank you very much for joining us. It's been discussed in, you know, very public situation in last night's city council meeting in Redmond, now at the Board of Commissioners meeting, and we will reconvene on this subject on September 27th.
Thank you.
I might add that this last weekend, I was in Pendleton, drove by the state hospital. That was actually a state hospital, opened for 101 years, closed, and in early 2000, it actually did have 60 people that were there, mental patients that were being taken care of. They closed it in 2014. And honestly, I would like to know where those 60 people are today. You know, where are they today? And if you'll notice that the state, the OHA, I just had a conversation with Pat Allen Monday, they are looking into approving Wilsonville with another 60 beds perhaps, and then they added 48 in Junction City. But you know what? They haven't added any beds on our side of the mountain. So I'm having a conversation this afternoon with Senator Lieber, who was a, an enormous proponent of mental health and what we needed to do. I just, I just think it's fascinating that, you know, the state hospital in Pendleton went through a whole history, a lot of name changes, and yet today, our homeless population is truly overwhelming in a lot of areas of Deschutes County. And we're hearing it from everyone. So, anyway, we'll see what can happen.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, item number eight. This is a presentation and acknowledgement of National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Jessica Jackson, Caroline Suter. Thank you for joining us today.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for having us. For the record, I am Jessica Jackson. I am the supervisor of the prevention programs at Deschutes County Health Services, and I am joined and very happy to introduce Caroline Suter, who has joined our team as the suicide prevention coordinator. She also is the co-chair of Central Oregon Suicide Prevention Alliance, which you may have heard the acronym COSPA. Caroline comes to us with a background in both public and behavioral health, and she has hit the ground running, and I'm really happy to have her on board. And she chose us as her professional family. So we do want to thank you, as well as the many volunteers and community partners across central Oregon who help us in suicide prevention. Today, we want to take time to recognize and highlight suicide prevention awareness within our community. So Caroline, Caroline and I are here to speak about data, what we know regarding suicide in our area. We want to talk about some of the important events that are coming up to recognize Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, excuse me, Awareness Month, of which you have declared September as that month, so thank you for that. And we also want to remind everyone of where to access services when they, whether they're in a crisis or just need some additional assistance. I'm going to transition now, start off, and Caroline will, will take over afterward here. I'm going to transition and talk about what we're seeing in Oregon and locally. So we certainly know this is a challenging time, and it's, it's very normal to be concerned about suicide risk in our communities. There's heightened stress from COVID, smoke, fires, social isolation, financial strain. There are a number of things that really are impacting our mental and emotional well-being. Historically, I think you are aware that Oregon has had one of the highest rates of suicide in the nation. However, I'm really relieved to share with you that we have not seen an increase in suicide deaths compared to corresponding months during this COVID time period. We've also not seen increase in other indicators such as suicide-related visits to the emergency department. So, in fact, that's similar to across the nation. Oregon's not unique in those trends. So while this is really good news, it's important to remember that our average is too high, and that even one death by suicide has a devastating impact in our community. According to our data analysis from 2001 to 2017, we know that Deschutes County loses on average 47 people each year to suicide. So this is just about one person dying by suicide every week. Of this group, we know that white males aged 25 to 64 make up the majority of this number. We know that our youth, while having the lowest suicide rate out of any age group, remains sixth highest in the state amongst 10 to 24-year-olds. So we really must remain vigilant in ensuring that our community knows the resources that are available, that our community knows how to recognize warning signs, and how to get people the help that they need. So through our work with community partners, we can educate and provide outreach on how to be aware of suicide warning signs. This is similar, very similar, to recognizing the warning signs of a stroke or a heart attack. We want our public to be, to be just as knowledgeable about how to recognize the warning signs of suicide. So some of those signs might be feeling, someone feeling stuck or hopeless, perhaps the increased use of alcohol or other drugs, withdraw from friends, family, social settings that seems uncharacteristic for someone, perhaps an excess level of panic, anxiety, or depression, difficulty sleeping, no sense of purpose in life. So there are, that's just a, an idea of what we might be looking for, listening for, with the people that we interact with. Each and every one of us can help prevent suicide, and I want you, as well as everyone listening, to keep in mind these four things that they, that we can all do to contribute to, to this effort. The first is to know and watch out for those warning signs. If you're picking up on them, ask, ask the question, are you thinking about killing yourself? That's often a great relief to the person that's experiencing such grief, and we can find folks help from there. So secondly, know the resources and where to go for help. We have tremendous resources in Deschutes County, and Caroline is going to speak to those in just a bit. And Caroline, if you wouldn't mind, I'd love to have everyone be sure that they put the national lifeline in their cell phone. That's something that is a go-to wherever you are at any time, whether you're in need or you're with someone who needs help. You can call that number. Third, please promote the resources. So don't just know about them, but promote them in your sphere of influence, in your workplace, in your social setting. And last, what I'd like us all to keep in mind is that we need to do better about promoting everyday mental wellness. We need to talk more openly about how we take care of our mental wellness. We need to make the topic more socially acceptable. It needs to be a part of everyday conversation. So, some of the things that I do to support my own mental health is I have an ongoing relationship with a tremendous, wonderful therapist. That's been really helpful for me. I also really rely on getting outside, so sometimes that's not possible with the smoke, so I have to be creative with that. But those, that's something that's really important for me. I also kind of on a daily basis make sure that I have an opportunity to think about what I'm grateful for. Some days are really hard, and I think it's important that we find something that we're appreciative of every day. So kind of that mindful practice. So kind of that mindful practice. The things that are helpful for me might not be the same things that are helpful for you, but I encourage everyone to think about what is helpful for you and to not be afraid to talk about it. The more that we can talk about it, the more we can help others feel comfortable about seeking help, about talking about mental wellness and not having it be a stigmatized topic. So there is a lot we can do to bring hope and help to people in our community, and this all helps lower the rates that we're concerned about and prevent not only suicide deaths, but those traumatic attempts that we also are important to reduce. So I'm going to pause there, hand it over to Caroline.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. So I'm just going to jump in a little bit about some of the upcoming events and some of the events that actually just have recently passed for the month of September around Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. So one, one event that Deschutes County Suicide Prevention Program in collaboration with Central Oregon Suicide Prevention Alliance and a yoga studio out in Redmond named Lovebird Studio, Yoga Studio, put on a event this last Friday on September 10th. It was called Promote Hope. It was a free event to the public, promoted across multiple platforms to reach community-wide, regional, community members to come and engage in a free yoga session. It was promoted as a space, a safe space for people to heal and experience hope around suicide. The yoga instructor at the studio was a lost survivor herself, and so she was able to not only guide that process, but also speak to her own experience. So that was recently an event that we helped promote as one of the events in September for Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. The next one that's coming up is actually this Thursday on the 16th. This is also open to the public as well. It's a candlelight vigil. And it's, this event will be held outdoors. We're asking the public to socially distance and wear masks to stay, stay healthy. But this is also another event for hope and healing and speaking on resiliency. So some of the things that will be happening at this event is that we'll be providing regional and national resources around suicide prevention and crisis-related services and access points. And we'll also have a few different types of activities. So we'll be having some poem readings. We will have a lost survivor speaker, speaking on her experience around resiliency and hope, as well as doing the actual candle lighting for any of the individuals that were impacted by suicide and who have passed by suicide. And additionally, we will have some live music there. And again, this is open to the public, so anyone can come. Last but not least, we have another event that's actually happening in October. It's on October 16th, from 10:30 in the morning until 12:00 PM. It's a out-of-the-darkness Central Oregon virtual walk. It's organized by American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, and it's within support of the Central Oregon Suicide Prevention Alliance. It was originally going to be in person, but just with surges within COVID, we wanted to ensure people to stay happy and healthy, so it is moved to a virtual platform and will occur on the 16th, and this is also open to the public. So with all that, all those events that are coming in this month, we also wanted to transition, lastly, to just highlight some of the resources, the really amazing, important resources that we have within our community. We want to recognize and, and just take time to, you know, acknowledge that suicide is not, is not associated to just one factor. And with that in mind, there are so many different options around accessing services within our community. So I'm just going to go in briefly on a few, but we will also provide a website at the end around where you can access all the information for all of these great resources and more, as well as the events. So we have in our community a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week stabilization center for any individual who may experiencing crisis or, or in need. We also have a community 24-hour crisis hotline that anyone can call to gain support and talk to a professional. But we also have a national hotline, which Jessica just recently was highlighting, and we were hoping that everyone could take some time out, pull out their cell phone, and put this into their phone. It's an, again, a national suicide prevention hotline. It is 1-800-273-TALK, T-A-L-K, or 8255. I'll just repeat that one more time. Again, it's a national suicide prevention hotline, 1-800-273-TALK, T-A-L-K, 8255. So all these are great resources, and as well as events that are happening in September, you can find all of this information, plus a lot more around mental health providers in our community and just national resources on PreventSuicideCO.org. And again, that's PreventSuicideCO.org. And just to end, we, we wanted to thank you for taking time out of your day and your agenda to have us and to declare September as our Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and to have us here to talk a little bit about what is going on in the community around suicide. So thank you.
Thank you very much for that thorough overview of the resources available. I know that there is a proclamation on the books that is, you know, comes around annually for National Suicide Prevention Awareness, so we do do this annually. You know, as a community member and elected official, I also want to make sure people understand that having a strong, open relationships and, you know, faith-based opportunities are out there also. You know, if you're a part of a congregation, talking to a priest or a pastor, asking the tough questions about, you know, maybe the meaning of life, or what do I do when I'm way down like this? There's other opportunities out there also, you know, so open and honest communication with family and friends, but also that faith-based community. So there's a lot of options out there for people struggling and in times of need. So thank you very much. Other comments?
Yes, thank you very much for sharing all those resources, and Jessica, thank you for sharing your personal example of how you're taking care of your mental health.
I was just thinking back of all the people I know through my life that have actually committed suicide, and what were the warning signs, you know, when we don't catch it, it's, it's really horrible because everyone else is left to feel so badly. So please don't ignore any warning signs that Jessica brought up today. When people are doing things, COVID has been incredibly impactful on our world, and when you see how many people in America now are on antidepressants, I really feel it can't be healthy, you know, please, like what Jessica said, get outside, get fresh air, get a walk. I always, I'm so thankful in my day that I start the day out at 6:00 AM going outside, and oh my gosh, if that doesn't wake you up and make you feel better today, it was particularly kind of warm. It was quite nice. 54, no smoke, and sisters, so. But really, try and do things for yourself that do make the difference, and, and don't ignore the warning signs, please.
There we go. Great, thank you so much. National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month.
Thank you. Take good care.
Thank you, Caroline, for joining us.
Item number nine, discussion of increasing staffing needs for the Health Services Intellectual and Development Disabilities Program. So we do have a set of slides available. They were in our box today. I think this will be, okay, Paul Partridge, Cheryl Smallman.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners.
We can hear you, yes.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate you taking the time on the agenda today to consider this topic of increasing staffing needs that we have in our program. For the record, my name is Paul Partridge. I'm the program manager for the Deschutes County Health Services Intellectual and Developmental Disability Services. And joining me this morning is my colleague with our admin department, Cheryl Smallman. I'll let her introduce herself.
Morning, commissioners. Cheryl Smallman, Business Officer for Health Services.
And so what I would like to do this morning, as you saw in the background information on the agenda, we have really an ever-growing need in terms of the growth and the projected forecasting with the service needs across our population of children and adults in our community who have an intellectual or developmental disability. And just as a reminder and overview of our service, we really have four main functions within our program, which are case management, assessing, planning, providing access and referral, and, and monitoring those planned services. So case management is one, providing abuse investigations to any allegations of abuse and, or neglect that are defined by statute for the adult portion of our population, providing foster certification and licensing so we can keep a capacity within our community of, of foster homes. And at the front door, providing eligibility determination for anyone who is applying for services. And so as, as we've mentioned in, in July, our, our budget process for ADD is a, is a bit different. We always make it through the, the county adopt budget process, and then there's, there's this sort of a concurrent process that's happening with state legislature, who is considering what the recommended budget might be for, for our, our programs across the state. And so in July, we actually receive an award from our contractor, Department of Human Services, the State Office of Developmental Disability Services, which reflected an increase of about $1.1 million in terms of revenue from, from our contractor. And so we have a presentation this morning that we would like to walk through that sort of portrays the, the growth and the expected, you know, continued growth, and how we plan to keep a pace of these ever-increasing demands. I'll take a moment and share my screen and pause to see if there's any initial comments or questions.
So I saw this as an agenda item coming last week, as the chair putting the agenda together, and I was able to have a sit-down one-on-one before this. I don't know, have, has anybody else been able to do that, fit it in your schedule? It was with Paul and Janice?
No, I, I had a, I had an orientation from Paul early on, but, you know.
Commissioner Dare?
No, I did not have that one, but I did spend a lot of time in the state meetings a year ago on this program and what we're doing. And I'm looking at this, and I'm wondering, we increased the abuse investigation by $400,000? Paul, is, can you speak to that? That seems really.
Definitely.
That's, that's any, you know, almost four times what we had originally. So what's, what's going on out there?
Yeah. Excellent question, Commissioner. Thank you for asking that. I want to underscore, this is not a reflection of necessarily in an, in, an increase in what we're experiencing in terms of adults' abuse allegations. What it really is, is more reflective of a correct capture of that scientific workload model process that the state goes through. There's, so this is like a really, really elaborate time study that gets done every, every biennium. They sort of measure what work we do, how, how many experiences we have in each of those types of work. And I've, I've actually did, most of my career in this field was doing abuse investigations, and I've watched how that workload model process has gone from biennium to biennium for, oh, probably 12 years. And this time, they have come closer to getting it right than ever, is what I would like to go on record as saying. I think they have more correctly captured a large body of the work that abuse investigators do, which is screening initial allegations. The screening of those initial allegations takes an enormous amount of time in comparison to what has previously been measured, which was only the number of assigned cases that we were working. So I hope that helps to explain that, that significant change in, in numbers.
It, it does? I mean, I know that the abuse number for the state still is having a problem with answering the phone for, you know, children and for elder abuse, and I would imagine maybe some of the ADD abuse, I mean, Paul, does it go there too? Or is there a different number where people are supposed to call and report that type of abuse?
We have local connections. We, for the most part, the mandatory reporters that are making reports on adult abuse for ADD population are calling directly into our office. We do get a few cross reports from a statewide hotline that's available too, but yeah, we have a local mechanism for reporting, which works really well for the most part.
Thank you.
One other, one other thing, Commissioner, that I might add to that statement on the abuse investigations growth is we have this year added, MOU is in place, and we're receiving funding to also respond to allegations of abuse in our neighboring county to the north, Jefferson. So we've been doing crook for some period of time. We've added, added Jefferson, which is about another half an FTE of worth of work.
Great, please proceed.
Okay. So I'm going to rather quickly go through this and probably lean on Cheryl when we get to more of the financial slides toward, toward the end. But just to show the projection of, of growth over time for the last five years, this slide indicates overall about an 8.3% annual growth rate per, per year. We, we have, we have added an additional 260 individuals in case management services in Deschutes County since 2016. So that's showing a pretty, pretty steady growth. In comparison to the county population, what, what we're trying to compare here is, I don't want to get too hung up in the, in the, in the weeds on, on these numbers, but what we're trying to portray, I think, here is that that 8.3% increase per year in ADD population is in comparison to that about 2.8% overall county population growth. So we could draw a lot of conclusions by why, why is the ADD population growth so much higher? Things like, well, we do a lot of outreach to educators and to other portions of the community to make sure that people with ADD, we've, we've been doing a lot of effort on that, to make sure that individuals are getting a pathway into our services who, who need it. But suffice it to say, our enrollment has grown faster than the, than the overall county population, I think is what we're trying to portray here. This slide is just a visual of current, what our personnel looks like. This is our visual organizational chart, and I just would point out that, you know, the, the numbers in terms of span and control are getting a bit large, at least on one supervisor's part. Our in-home services continues to grow at the largest rate, larger than people moving into comprehensive or group home settings. And a 1 to 13 supervisor to staff ratio is starting to get, for the, for the amount of... starting to get, for the amount of quality improvement efforts that our supervisors have to maintain, that's a lot of direct reports. So this request you'll see is adding another supervisor in here. And here are the FTE proposals. In the second bullet, we have those outlined. And I just want to note that all of these proposed additions are really to stay apace of the steadily growing community need. And they are, for the most part, these are in proportion with the growth indicated in our contractors' funding model. The one that we've already highlighted, Commissioner Adair, that you sort of pointed out, is that I think the one outlier is the adult abuse investigations, and I've already explained that as kind of the, I would say, that's one of these things that's not like the others. The others really are just keeping up with steady population growth. The next slide is really just a portrayal of what we're proposing with the proposed additional staffing FTE, is what our org chart would sort of transform into. And as you can see, the span and control is a little bit more manageable. We have this in-home, we would be adding a second in-home services supervisor and reducing the load on our existing. And I'll invite Cheryl and see what comments she has on the financial slides, and I'll turn these for you as we go.
Perfect. This chart or this table demonstrates the main service elements, which is very similar to how other behavioral health programs are funded. Here you can see the three, which is admin, they provide an allocation for that for the ADD program, case management, which is the largest portion of funding, and then abuse investigations. You'll see there on the first column, what was budgeted for FY '22. This is consistent with the FY '21 level before we knew what we would be receiving, then the revised amount and the change in funding from the budgeted level. And then lastly, the new FTE that we are requesting, we're asking for 7.5 regular FTE in fiscal year '22. In the cost models, we've assumed that those would start October 1st. So that obviously will get underway ASAP. And then we're asking for 3.5 regular FTE as of July 1, 2022, so fiscal year '23.
So Cheryl, a question. So that increase of 1.133, is that all state dollars following the legislative session, or is that a mix of resources from the county's health funds?
That is all state funding.
Thank you.
Next slide. Okay. This is where it starts to get really interesting with ADD. They allow, in the case management service element, the opportunity to participate in local match. And it can either be standard match, or it could be maximum match. Historically, maximum match is what ADD usually goes, is eligible for. The standard match is a straight 5%, which is the parity on the funding that the state provides to us. Maximum match allows for a portion of the expenses over state funding to come back to the ADD program as reimbursement. And those are all federal dollars when we participate in maximum match. What you have here is we have to meet three criteria to be eligible for maximum match. We have to have expenses that are over the state amount. We have to have a certain number of experiences or encounters that we reach. And then we have to have enough county general fund to participate. And what you have there is roughly the percentage that comes back to us in federal funds, which is 67.5% of expenses over state funding, and approximately 32.5% is county general fund. So in the proposed model, where we add 7.5 FTE in fiscal year '22 and 3.5 in '23, we have enough county general funds this fiscal year to participate in maximum match. And we anticipate that we would need to expend $209,000 to participate in local match.
$209,000?
209,000 is the estimate.
Oh, okay.
And we have that in the ADD program right now. So we do not need additional county general funds to participate this year. We also use county general funds to cover administrative costs in the ADD program that are over state funding that are not eligible for match program.
I might add an example from this past fiscal year in '21, just as a point of illustration. The fiscal year that we just finished, we had about 760, almost 762,000 in expenses that were above what we had in state contract revenue. So we just sent a check up the local county general fund portion, about $256,000, to the state in order to pull back about a half a million, a little over half a million, $506,000 roughly, from the feds. So I hope that wasn't, didn't confuse things more, but that's just sort of an illustrative point of how we pull down federal money to at least partially make us whole for our local costs.
Sorry, could you repeat that, Paul? So last year, we had 762K above the state funding, and we were able to secure over two-thirds of that from federal funds through the county contribution. But what were those numbers again?
It's, yeah, the expenses above the state contracted amount were 761, 763. The amount that we anticipate receiving back in federal funds is 505, 850. I see Cheryl nodding her head. That's a good sign. Thank you, Cheryl.
Yes.
And so we had to contribute or cover 250-something thousand with local dollars to leverage that?
Yep. And this year, that was local dollars that we had has, I'm probably gonna miss the term, but we had balance, not really carryover, but we had a balance of available local funds. So we didn't have to, that's not additional county general fund that we had to come and ask for last year. We had it on our books.
Great, thank you.
Ready to go to the...
Slide, it'll show the 10-year county general fund investment into the ADD program. So you can see, I believe, the average for 10 years, including what we're estimating we would need in fiscal year '23, which is an additional $290,000, the average for the 10-year look is about 200, just over $200,000, $205,000. So what we had seen is we had county general fund that was going into the program, particularly fiscal year '17, '18, '19, and '20. And all of that had to be put forward towards match or to cover administrative costs that were not part of the match program. So we've been able to, in fiscal year '21 and '22, this current fiscal year, use some of those carry-forward county general fund dollars to continue participation in the local match program.
So for a little bit of clarity, I'm just thinking back, during our annual budget process, this is one of the programs that ends up getting rolled into the total general fund investment of the Health Department. You know, so we have the opportunity to look at these numbers, but I'm just thinking, we don't really talk about, I mean, other than a package level, we don't really pull out the specific fund and talk about, well, this year, let's do 150, let's do, this year, do 408. I mean, it's presented to us in the package, but I'm just thinking, we don't really talk about it individually at the Budget Committee meeting, do we? I'm looking at Tom right now.
Yeah, no, we haven't the last couple of years, Commissioner, but that level of detail is presented to you in that binder, that the Health Department, kind of a supplemental budget document, that breaks down general fund investment by the subprograms within the overall Health Department. When we first started doing that, four or five years ago, we actually did get into that level of detail and looked at specific general fund investment in each of those subprograms. But you're correct in that the last couple of years, we've just, we've looked at it at a higher level in terms of the overall general fund support for the Health Department.
And then I'm just thinking through the process. So you see 14 and 15, and then it jumped up to 400,000 in '17 and '19. So just the concept that this is a growing program, it's been growing investment at the state level, and then it ends up being some federal dollars. So my point is, I am in support of this. It's great to know that we can support this, you know, group of individuals and families in need, obviously. And, you know, it looks like maybe it's gone up and down over time, you know, how this is gonna stabilize. So maybe we're gonna be at a more stable investment over time. But we'll find out. We'll have to look at it each year, obviously.
I have one question. So we're being offered an increase of 1.133 million for fiscal year 2022. Do we, but we're talking about two fiscal years, you know, projecting forward into '23. Do we already have a sense of what the state allocation is going to be for '23 as well?
Yes, they operate on a biennium.
Right.
So the same as this year.
Okay, so likely the same as this year, okay.
So that 290 is the next year's, our next fiscal year, but the second year's of the biennium.
Right. Yeah, I just didn't, I wasn't, you know, I know that the state budgets biennially, but I just wasn't 100% certain that we knew what the amount, that our allocation was gonna be next year.
So this item is for information, future resolution could be in two weeks. Any other thoughts or discussion?
Okay, so the 3.5 people that we're adding for year '23 then, we're actually, are we approving that today? Or is that going to be in the resolution? Are we just talking about the 7.5?
Well, it's my understanding, it will, on the resolution, we can only approve the 7.5, because a resolution legally is only for the current fiscal year. So it would be part of the budget process, technically.
So is that three and a half kind of committed to by growing the program, where it needs to balance out with the next FTE? Or will that be a choice we'll have in the next fiscal year?
Choice.
Yeah, I think we're really just trying to portray what we're projecting as programmatic need, you know, over the course of our contract period, you know, over the course of biennium. But yeah, it's definitely gonna be a choice when we reach that point.
The next fiscal year, great. So a future resolution's gonna include the seven and a half FTE, the dollars as allocated by the state legislature following the session. No other general fund need for this year, but next year will be a follow-on discussion, a fully informed follow-on discussion now that we're up to speed.
So Paul, then they'll be allocating a half a million dollars for the abuse investigation next year too, in our next year's budget?
Yes, that's what we anticipate.
And you think that's gonna more adequately handle the situation then, that number?
Absolutely. Absolutely more than current. We have currently two abuse investigators who, they're both exempt staff, and they, well, I'm not gonna get too specific on the number of hours that those two individuals work, but it's, they're putting in an awful lot more effort than what there is work to do.
We hear about, I mean, we've been hearing from other programs within behavioral health about hiring challenges and workforce shortages. Do you, are people who work in ADD sort of like a special subgroup of behavioral health workers that you anticipate, you know, being able to fill these positions fairly easily? Or are you looking towards some challenging recruitment times ahead as well?
Oh goodness, I kind of wish you hadn't asked that question out loud, but, because I'm known as having an enormous amount, my optimism is unflappable. And so I believe that there aren't any hurdles that we can't get over. However, we just recently had a recruitment to fill a vacancy of a service coordinator, a case manager, and we had to open it a second time, because the first round, we only had four applicants, I think maybe only one of which really met the minimum qualification. So I think we are, you know, to be realistic, to balance my optimism with realism, I think we are going to have a challenge getting these seven and a half FTE filled over this period of time. And I anticipate we're probably going to experience some vacancy savings because of those challenges. I know our provider community, you know, the folks that are really providing the direct care for our population, group homes, foster homes, employment providers, are currently experiencing a significant staffing crisis, to the point where they're having their managers, coordinators, even their HR directors stepping in to provide the much-needed care for our individuals. So I don't think we're gonna be having that level of challenge in our program in terms of filling these, but I'm, you know, I'm not, I am realistic enough to know that we are gonna be experiencing a challenge, Commissioner. Thanks for asking that question.
Thanks for that background.
Okay, good discussion. Anything else? Thank you very much. We'll see some paperwork in a meeting in two weeks.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate your time on the agenda today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, item number 10, COVID-19 update. I want to thank everybody for standing by. We're just about 20 minutes from the, timing-wise, 20 minutes from the proposed schedule, but not too bad. Lot of content here today. So this is streamed live at Facebook Live stream, and also interpretive surface is also available.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for having us. Like Commissioner Demone mentioned, this is our weekly COVID-19 update. My name is Emily Freeland, and I am the COVID-19 Response and Recovery Unit Supervisor. And today I am joined by Rita Bacho, my supervisor, who is the Program Manager for Advancement in Protections, as well as Dr. Mike Johnson from St. Charles. And I understand that he has a hard stop at 11, so perhaps it would be better to go ahead and have him go ahead and present the information from the hospital first, and then we can go after if he would like, or...
That'd be fine. So yeah, some of the slides will be kind of parallel to the slides of the county. But yeah, for Dr. Johnson, thank you very much for joining us, sharing us what's happened in real time at the hospital system and the analysis following.
And perhaps he isn't able to do that. It looks like I haven't seen him pop off of unmute. So we'll just go ahead and get started with our... with ours. I'll go ahead and share my screen here. And can everyone go ahead and see those slides?
Yes.
Okay. So like I mentioned, my name is Emily Freeland, and we are here to do the COVID-19 Response and Recovery update for Deschutes County. So I'm going to start off and go over our local data. So as we all know, we've been in this pretty strong surge that's fueled by the Delta variant, which is much more contagious and spreads much more rapidly than the previous variants that we had been experiencing in our community. The last couple of weeks, we've been holding steady at about 960 cases per week, which is a slight decline from the week previous, which we had over 1,000 cases. These cases are, so 15,921 total cases from the time that COVID has been in our community, and we're at 99 deaths. So if we look at the weekly cases, case rates by age group, this graph shows week over week, so starting the week of 8/15 to 8/21, and ending this last week at 9:05 through 9:11, with the dark blue bar broken down by age group, and this is shown in case rates per 10,000 population. We can see that per 10,000 population consistently are about 18 to 30-year-olds are the most likely to have high case rates, and that is consistent week over week, although we do see some fluctuation week to week, with lower case numbers in our highly vaccinated populations, so those are the 60-year-old and older, as well as younger people under So our case investigation team calls and follows up on all of the cases that come through our system, and 73% of these cases are followed up within 24 hours of the case report. So this means that our case investigators are calling these people, educating them on what they need to do next, and connecting them with services in our community that can help them, as well as making sure that if they're really sick, they're going and seeking out care. We were positioned in a place where we were able to do, keep these relatively high numbers of cases that are contacted within 24 hours because we held on to much of our staff, even during the decline, which has really helped us out as those numbers increased really rapidly. So if we look at our test results by week, you can see with the dotted line, that is the percent positivity, and we'd like to see that number relatively low. Last week, it was over 14%, it's almost, it's 14.9%, I believe, which is extremely high. This is also with high numbers of tests. So right now, we are over 7,000 tests per week being run, so it's not like we have a low number of tests, and that's why we have a high positivity rate. We're running a lot of tests in our community. In fact, St. Charles has a drive-through testing that's open Monday through Friday in the parking lot, so people can go there and get drive-through testing. We have lots of providers doing lots of testing. And in fact, out in front of the building you're in right now, at Wall Street, we have a free testing that's sponsored by OHA. That's a drive-through testing, and it's open today from 9:00 to 2:00. If anyone needs a COVID test, they feel a little symptomatic, or they think they may have been exposed, they can, they can go down there and get a free test. No questions asked, no insurance needed today.
Emily, can I ask a question about kind of what's, what's driving the test numbers? I'm curious whether we're, you know, the bulk of those are people who are feeling symptoms and going in to get tested, or whether they are people who've been contacted by case investigators, or people who are already infected, and like, oh, I should go get a test, too, or, you know, are some of these people being picked up, like, if they want to go to get a, you know, some kind of other procedure at St. Charles, or, you know, what, like, can you break down for me a little bit, kind of what, who's coming to get tested, and what the driver is?
Yeah, so I don't have the numbers in front of me about what that looks like, but I think it's a pretty good combination. So there are a lot of symptomatic people that are seeking out testing, as well as many people whose family members are sick, or they know they've had an exposure, and they know that because family members are telling them, or case investigators or contact tracers are calling them, they're being told by the entity that they work for, or their school, or a club, that they've had an exposure, and so they seek out testing. The procedure numbers are lower, but I know that there is an increase in demand also for activities such as travel, and attending concerts, or doing those other kinds of things. So some providers will do testing for those other kind of circumstances, but I know, like, right now, for St. Charles, because they have such a high demand just from people that are symptomatic or are close contacts, that they're not doing travel testing, or testing for, like, going to a concert at Les Schwab Amphitheater, where other providers are doing that. So there is a combination, and I know that, I've spoken to several providers who are doing those kind of pre-activity type testing, and they do have a large demand, because, you know, not all providers are doing that. And they've also said that they're picking up some positive results, so, which is a good thing, right? Because that means that somebody had been told to go and get tested because they had to, and perhaps they wouldn't have been seeking out testing because their symptoms were so mild, and then we're picking up those positives and keeping them from, from going out and doing those activities, hopefully. So I hope that answered your question a little bit, maybe not with percentages or numbers, but at least a little narrative.
Thank you.
Okay, whoops. So all of this is to say that our community spread is high, so that is true throughout the state. In Deschutes County, like I said, the last week, which is reported here of 9:05, our test positivity rate was at almost 15%, and we had 487 cases per 100,000 residents. So that dark green is where we don't want to be, and we're hopeful that our numbers do continue to decrease. But there's lots of variables in play that are going to, you know, change what we see in the future. So Dr. Johnson is going to talk a little bit more about hospitalizations, but you can see that over the last few weeks, this is just from May until September, you know, our case rates that are being hospitalized are certainly increasing, and most of those people are not fully vaccinated. So a small proportion of people are fully vaccinated, while most of the people that are in care in the hospital are not.
Emily, can you?
I'm going to skip this.
Is Commissioner, can you share the numbers for the breakthrough cases and the positivity? You know, people that don't go to the hospital, but they have been vaccinated and they do test positive. Is that possible?
So I don't have those numbers in front of me right now either, but we can certainly try to go ahead and include that, those numbers in future presentations, or get those to you a little later.
Okay, thank you.
One other important way to look about, look at this or think about it, I think also is, we can see that the majority of the people who are going to the hospital are unvaccinated, but, you know, kind of the additional consideration is, how much of our population is vaccinated? So, yeah, and, you know, if we're at over 70% vaccination for adults, then what we're seeing is a very small percentage of the population, the unvaccinated, accounting for a very large proportion of the cases and hospitalizations, and, you know, I think that's important for people to consider, because it, you know, what it demonstrates is that vaccination provides substantial protection from COVID and infection and severe illness. It's not bulletproof, but it provides a very substantial protection.
Agreed, yeah, the protection is very substantial, and, you know, for most people that are fully vaccinated, and they do test positive, their symptoms are much more mild. And the other thing is, you just don't know what would have happened if they weren't vaccinated and didn't have some immune response based on that. So quickly, I'm going to go over some new developments. So in the last week or so, one of the very biggest variables that is probably going to drive the numbers that we see in the next few weeks is kids going back to school. So we're going to have lots and lots of children who are not vaccinated because they're not eligible for it, or they haven't chosen to do that, together in close quarters, indoors, hopefully well masked, but we all know how difficult that that can be to keep kids, you know, wearing masks reliably throughout the day. So the ODE and OHA have come out with some five health and safety tips for students and households as we go back into school. So this is really one of our big concerns about driving this, and although most of us know that, you know, students typically are not going to get severe illness, which is, you know, we're really lucky, although there are some anomalies of that, they can bring the illness back home to friends and family, and then it can spread really rapidly there as well. So it's really important that we make a plan to vaccinate all eligible household members, because not everyone, especially those younger children, are eligible to be vaccinated. Mask up in public, including car pools. So this is one of the trends that we saw locally last year at the end of school, when we were seeing some outbreaks. Many times, they were not linked to the classroom setting, but they were linked to activities outside of class, including kids in car pools, or eating lunch together in their cars, those types of activities. So it's important to try to keep the mask on in those places as well. We're hoping that people will limit gatherings with other households for now. So this kind of goes back to some of those requirements that we had last year with, like, small household gatherings, and we probably all cringe to remember, you know, six people or eight people, or how many people we were allowed to have together. This goes back to that, so trying to keep your household safe by, by just staying with your household. If you are going to do social activities, recommending that they are moving those outdoors. So luckily, the smoke has cleared, and, you know, we're having some beautiful fall weather, so hopefully people can, can choose to recreate or have a picnic outside instead of staying inside for dinner with friends and family. And the last thing is, really plan on making a plan in case your children needs to miss school, either because they're diagnosed and are required to isolate, or they're identified as a close contact and are not able to attend school, because they may be able to spread it to others. So like we've mentioned, week over week, the Delta variant spreads easily in indoor spaces when people are unmasked and unvaccinated, so those are the most important tools that we have at this point to help control the spread. And I think if we go back and think about last school year, there, we weren't dealing with Delta variant, which wasn't as contagious, so we didn't see a lot of classroom spread. Also, most classrooms were set up with six feet of distancing between students, which is not a requirement this year. And so, you know, that kids being back in school, it's really important that we kind of recognize that things may look a lot different this year than they did in, you know, our previous experience. So we do have some new treatment developments, and I think we mentioned this last time as well. Monoclonal antibodies are available, and monoclonal antibodies are a type of antibody that are infused to help people who are either diagnosed or exposed not get sick. Without antibodies, the virus can enter your cell and start to replicate, but with antibodies, the antibodies are going to block the receptors so that the virus can't enter your cell and replicate. So you can get antibodies in many different ways. I think we've all talked a lot about vaccination and the way that we get antibodies through having a vaccine. So you get a piece of the virus that your immune system can recognize, and then your body creates antibodies from that. Typically, it's one to two weeks after both doses are given that you have a significant amount of antibodies. Versus antibody therapy, which is this new treatment, where you are introducing the antibodies themselves, and they can bind to the virus and stop it from infecting your cells. So these work as soon as they're given, and we're lucky that St. Charles is able to be doing infusions of about 25 people per day. People that are immunocompromised or have other underlying conditions are typically being seen and scheduled within 24 hours of when they're being referred by their physician, and several other providers in our community are also working on being able to provide monoclonal antibodies for their patients, as well as in long-term care facilities.
Emily, great slide, thank you very much.
Yes, I want to thank you especially for that slide. That treatment's been available for some time, and I really, I'm hoping that more people know about it, and actually, I know that there were clinics in Florida that were treating up to 325 a day in their clinic, so I'm hoping that the 25 number will, apparently, more clinics will add this. I know some at BNC is going to add it around the first of October. So definitely, we need that treatment to make sure people don't end up in the hospital.
Agreed, and yeah, we're lucky that there's a lot of providers that are looking on ramping this up. They're planning on probably starting pretty small, but if you think about the numbers of cases in Florida, that's also much higher. You know, our numbers are, you know, 150 cases a day, maybe, so if we could get to a number where we're looking at 75 to 100 people being able to be treated, that would probably be a significant impact on hospitalization rates here, because you're treating a lot of people, you know, out of our population, so.
I think that's a great explanation, Emily, and also the fact that they have all these parameters, that you have to be over 65, or you have to have COPD, or you have to have a BMI over 25. I just tell people, you know, beg your doctor, and, because it is incredibly effective. You know, so hopefully, the ramp-up will happen sooner with our numbers of 1,000 a week.
Emily, one other, one other piece of information that would be helpful for helping people to understand, kind of the choice between going to get a vaccine proactively and getting antibiotic therapy, you know, after you've been infected with COVID, would be to provide, if this is possible, I'm sure this is complicated to unpack, but to help people understand the difference in cost and effort, both to the person who's being treated or vaccinated, and to the people who are, the healthcare providers who are providing that care to the person. I would suspect, and I don't, I certainly don't know this, but I would suspect that the impacts, you know, on our healthcare workforce, you know, the time required for someone, you know, a person who's concerned about COVID, that the time for everyone involved in getting vaccinated, you know, in advance, you know, proactively, versus having to take time out of their life to go get treated, is, I would suspect that there's a difference, and I would also suspect there's a cost difference here as well. So if it's, if there's a way to add that, that kind of information to this slide, I think it would be helpful.
Yeah, we can certainly look into those numbers. I know there is a significant difference, and if you think about staffing and time and all those things, like, that's the reason that, you know, clinics can't just pick this up right away. It takes someone to either infuse or do an injection subcutaneously, and then wait to make sure that the person is, you know, there's a lot that's involved in this, and that's why a lot of providers are starting to do it, but they have to kind of start slow, they have to find space for these people to do. Clearly, they are COVID-positive, so you have to think about that, as well as how they're moving through your spaces in your clinics. So there's certainly, you know, having antibodies from a vaccine is much more, you know, efficient, and, you know, works well, and all of those things. So I appreciate that comment. So the last thing that I want to?
I'm sorry, Emily, if I could just add, this is Mike Johnson. I spoke with our chief pharmacist yesterday on this topic, and he had, he was telling me that, you know, initially, they were talking about this unbelievable supply of the monoclonal antibody infusion for the therapy, and he said that some of the suppliers are now retracting a little bit on that initial statement, and that so many people are using this, that we're in the process of putting together the data set just yesterday, to be honest with you, and assess for which patients this is most beneficial, because we foresee us having to prioritize who can get this, or who will get this. And so we're taking a look at length of stay, and the time between the infection date and the infusion date, and the number of comorbidities, and currently, we're only giving it to people that fit a certain category of either a high-risk exposure or a high-risk positivity, you know, patient. So it's not, you know, to the comment earlier, it's not going to be available for everybody, and we are going to have to make decisions. I mean, we're getting in between 150 and 200 positive cases in Central Oregon a day. Um, I mean, we're getting in between 150 and 200 positive cases in central Oregon a day. Even if we tripled this, we're not going to be able to give this to everybody. This is not an answer to getting vaccinated. Um, but sorry to jump in there, but I just thought I would offer that.
I very much appreciate that.
Yeah.
Um, so the last thing that I was going to mention, and then maybe it would be good to have Dr. Johnson hop in between Rita and myself because I know that we're maybe going to be running short on time close to the end of this, um, but I'll let you guys think of that. Um, so then last week, um, the president announced some new federal vaccine requirements. Um, this is requiring all employees, employers with more than 100 employees to ensure that their workers are vaccinated and test or tested weekly. Um, so we do not have all the ins and outs and details of this rule. Everyone is anxiously awaiting what this means. Um, and like we say in environmental health all the time, uh, the devil's in the details, right? All those little things and who, what, when, where, why, how, how is this rolled out are, are difficult questions to answer. Um, so what we do know is that we are preparing ourselves to provide technical guidance to businesses as they implement this new rule and we are waiting on information so that we can give clear and concise answers. Um, and we do know that OSHA will be the administrator of the rule. So we will not be involved in the regulation of this, this rule, but we are here to help as a, you know, help connect people with resources. So now I will either introduce Dr. Johnson or Rita to go over our local vaccine update.
Let's have Dr. Johnson, just because we can get him engaged and then let him go.
Okay, um, I will jump into this and I will also, um, because I think much of the information that I have is going to be somewhat redundant. Um, I want to make sure I wasn't unmuted.
We hear you.
Okay, thanks. Um, with some of the good information that Emily has already provided, so some of these slides will go fairly quickly. Um, let me start off by saying that, um, there is a, and I, I don't know how more non-committal I can be on this, but, uh, a glimmer of hope with regard to, uh, perhaps we are at or near the peak of the surge. And I say that, let me, uh, tell you why I'm, I'm so apprehensive of completely committing here. This is the seven-day cumulative total of positive cases. Um, it, there's usually a seven to 10-day lag between this and when we see those hospitalizations come down. This is being very stubborn, um, in coming down. And so we keep seeing these, uh, you know, these peaks and valleys even within, um, hopefully as the beginning of a decline here. Additionally, the positivity rate, uh, usually precedes, um, the decline in numbers of hospitalizations. And here's Deschutes County still at 14.9% at the end of the last full week of, of data. We'd like to see that down around five or eight percent. Uh, quickly looking at the other two counties, um, in, in our area, they're, they're not much better or even worse. Jefferson at 12.2, Crook County, um, climbing and at 20.1. Overall, the state, um, is not where we'd like it to be either, but at least, uh, at the state level, it looks like it might be coming down a little bit. So because of the positivity rate, because of the number of positive cases, I'm a little bit leery to say, yep, we're at the peak of the surge. Um, and even if we are at the peak of the surge, I think it's going to be, uh, uh, very cranky in declining. It's just going to come down slower than we've seen in the past. Um, here are the number of patients we see in the hospital on a given calendar day. Um, not a midnight census. So frequently what you'll see in the social media is how many patients were in the hospital? That is a snapshot at midnight, but that doesn't really convey, to be honest with you, the full picture because we are discharging, you know, anywhere from nine to 19 patients a day and they are just being replaced by others. So it's that patient throughput, I think that's, um, uh, that I, I use, uh, that number as opposed to a midnight census. It's more, it, it better depicts the, the actual strain on, on our resources. Um, but you can see that perhaps this is going to come down. Uh, we had a seven-day stretch where we had over 100 patients in the hospital, um, every day. Um, and before that seven-day stretch, that it only happened once. Um, here's my predictive model and this is the unknown little hump out here. Are we actually on this decline or are we just seeing a little false summit and, um, maybe this is going to persist for a bit? This might be a little bit optimistic, but I think that this is in line with many of the other models, um, around the state and even some of the other analysts who have come in and tried to help me, um, they use their models and depict what they think is going to happen in, in central Oregon and we see a lot of consistency there. Um, so, uh, this is to give you a little bit of an indication of like, you know, this, what, what we're looking at here. These are patient days. Um, so if one patient is in a, uh, if we have five patients in the hospital for that day, that's five patient days. Um, the average length of stay for a COVID patient is about seven days. If you don't go into the ICU, that's, you know, closer to five. If you do go into the ICU, that's over 16. So, um, if, uh, we do expect, as you saw from the previous slides, that, um, the second half of this month is going to be better than the first. Um, but if we were to continue on this, on this same path that we are right now, uh, we would absolutely dwarf, um, August with regard to patient days. We'd be 65% higher. Um, but I, I really think that that's not going to be the case, but it would very much surprise me if we, if September didn't end up being, uh, higher than, than August. Um, oh, and let me, uh, the second bullet there on the left, really wanted to point this out that, uh, you know, Deschutes County is 80% of our tri-county population. When I look at, you know, the, uh, all three counties together for central Oregon, but Deschutes County is 80% of that population. As far as patient days are concerned, um, uh, Deschutes County only comprises, I say only, but is underrepresented, meaning it represent, it's, it's 57% of the patient days. There's a couple of reasons for that. One is demographics. There is a difference in the average age and some of the health conditions, um, of, of some of the, uh, residents within each county. Um, but here is, I think, the biggest reason. Um, here is the vaccination percentage of the three different counties. Um, and, and you can see the huge disparity there. And I think that this is what is making, uh, the majority of that difference in the number of patient days and, and who's in our hospital systems. Um, so kudos to Deschutes County for having, um, a quite high vaccination rate. Um, is it high enough? Absolutely not. With the R factor of this new variant, in order to reach herd immunity, if that's even possible, according to some, it needs to be about 70, or excuse me, 83% vaccination rate. We're only increasing, uh, one-tenth of a percent per day. Um, so it would surprise me if we ever truly reached that by vaccination. Um, we might reach her immunity the very difficult way and painful way of having people becoming infected. Um, and if, if we do reach herd immunity, it will be because of the, the second reason there, which is sad. A lot of questions and discussion about breakthrough cases. This was updated just, uh, this morning with data through yesterday. Um, you, you can see that this, is that the percentage of breakthrough cases is increasing slightly each month. But we kind of expect that, um, as more and more of the population is vaccinated, um, there, you will see more and more breakthrough cases. It's just a matter of, of the math, uh, but it's still, um, quite, quite effective. Um, and since the beginning of the pandemic, um, on the far right side, you see that, um, you know, 88% of the people who have been in our, uh, hospital, um, have, have not been vaccinated, not fully vaccinated. This next chart is the same, are, are the same data. It's just displayed a little bit differently and basically to emphasize the, uh, the effect that August and September are having on the overall numbers just because of the sheer volume. And here is that same chart for Deschutes County. Um, I wanted to give you guys a, a picture of, of what it looks like for your, uh, residents. Um, pretty much the same, um, not that much difference. Um, and primarily because I said, you know, that you're 80% of the, the population, but... Very important to note that what's going on here. If, it, the, the breakthrough cases are those who, um, you know, depending on which county you're in, are like 12 to 20 years older than, than a non-breakthrough case. So the people that, um, are ending up with severe enough react, uh, you know, infections who are vaccinated, um, are those that are considerably older. Um, and as you might imagine, um, have a, a more difficult immune system or, you know, their immune system has more difficulty dealing with, with the virus and that just happens with age. Um, but this shows a, a great disparity, um, between those two populations. And, and here it is specific to, uh, Deschutes County. Um, so I did find that they're now publishing, and the link is down at the bottom of this, uh, slide, a weekly breakthrough case report at the state level. Um, and kind of the takeaway from this slide is even though the number of breakthrough cases are actually on the rise, um, comparison to the non-breakthrough cases, they still are at a ratio of, of, you know, five times less, um, uh, than, uh, you know, for hospitals or for actual breakthrough cases. Um, and at one point that was, uh, six times, but it's, uh, obviously there's some natural variability in the, in the data here.
And Dr. Johnson?
From that same website, I was able to break down the data for our two counties. And question?
Yep.
I, I was just wondering if you could put that against the backdrop again of the percentage of the population that is vaccinated. You know, I, I, I want to keep reemphasizing to people that, you know, we're having this massive number of COVID cases, uh, in the state and in our community right now. And the vast majority of those are coming from a very small minority of the population, the unvaccinated. Um, so I, I was just, you know, with, uh, when I was looking at your last slide, I was just wondering whether you could put that in the, I, I don't actually know what the, the overall vaccination rate for the state is at this point, but...
Yeah, I, it, there's, there's a couple of, of, of great points there. Um, this really does tell the story to me anyway, you know, that the people that are ending up in the hospital are vaccinated. Um, this tells a little bit different story, only that, okay, we do have breakthrough cases, but, um, across the state, 95% of them are not ending up in the hospital. Um, you know, in, in Deschutes County, um, we do have breakthrough cases, but 94% of them or, uh, it, you know, out of over 1,100, um, over a thousand are, are staying out of the hospital. Um, and, uh, you know, so I guess this kind of tells the story. And the other thing that is hidden in the details here are the breakthrough cases, remember, are much, much older, um, individuals who without the vaccination, um, would, would, you know, the, the hospitalization rate would be double or triple. Um, you know, the, uh, death rate or the mortality rate would be double or triple. Um, so it's, we're not comparing apples to apples here. The breakthrough cases are much, uh, much older folks, um, that are, you know, had more trouble dealing with the infection and yet they are still seeing the kind of results, um, that are better than those who are vaccinated. This is something that sometimes, uh, I don't know, misses people's radar, but, you know, we do have hospital, uh, hospitalizations, um, from COVID and way too many. Um, but you can see here that ED visits that are COVID-related, um, are through the roof, um, in August, um, and are on track to have a new record set in September. And as Emily was talking about, the, uh, with the kids going back to school, this is typically where we see more pediatric, um, activity for COVID is, is ED visits, perhaps not full hospitalizations, but ED visits. And I have a slide a little bit later that'll break that down. Um, but it, in July and August, um, we had the most visits in our ED since we've been on this electronic medical health record since April of 2018. Um, so we're breaking records on pure volume and a big contributor of that is the, uh, the COVID visits, which is really stressing our system. Uh, same information broken down for this particular county, um, and it's kind of the same story, well, it is the same story, just different numbers. Here's what I was talking about with regard to pediatric visits. Um, we're on track again, uh, even in September to, to break that, um, uh, high mark of 45 that we saw last month. Now, these may not sound like really large numbers, um, but compared to what they used to be, they are, you know, a hu- huge, um, in, in increase. Still, the numbers of hospitalizations remain fairly low, thankfully, um, but those have potential to raise and it's just incredibly sad to see, um, a pediatric hospitalization. So it'd be wonderful to keep that, keep that down. Here it is, broken down for Deschutes County, um, to just provide you with those numbers. Let me have two more slides. And there, again, I wish I had a, a better story for you. This is, uh, two days old, not, uh, but we did not have any, any deaths in the hospital yesterday, so it's, I guess it's still accurate for today. But we are tied with, uh, the other two top months, um, so far in September and it's, we still have half the month to go. Um, it's, uh, and you can see the numbers are, as they're broken down, um, for the month of September so far for the other three counties or the other two counties. Um, and here are the mortalities specific to Deschutes County. Um, it's already the biggest month, um, for mortalities related to COVID for, for Deschutes County. Um, although you can see on the left there that the mortality rate for hospitalized patients for Deschutes County is, is considerably lower than the other two counties. Um, and again, that's going to be attributed to two things, um, the demographics and the physical characteristics of the patients, um, as well as the vaccination rate. So I kind of ran through those quickly, but I knew we were a little bit pressed for time and I didn't want to belabor things that Emily already, um, eloquently presented. So, um, I'm certainly available for questions either now or send them to me via email later.
I want to thank you very much. This is getting to be quite a detailed set of information and, uh, you know, watching the, the trends and, uh, being able to look at different aspects of this is amazing. So just thank you very much for your professional, uh, analysis on this situation for all the citizens that are, can see this update.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Johnson. I think, uh, really, you know, a really important take-home story for everyone from this is that our, our hospital is being overwhelmed with COVID patients, uh, the vast majority of which were probably preventable with vaccination.
Yeah, I guess if I can just add one last comment and that would be that, um, you know, the, the COVID patients are not being turned away. Um, the people that are being turned away are the elective surgeries, um, that we have over 2,000 backlog cases right now. We, we could make COVID go away entirely and we could open up seven days a week with our, um, our, uh, our, our hospital, um, operations and it would still take us over a year, um, of just focusing on those backlog cases to get back to, uh, to where people aren't waiting six to eight months for a knee replacement, um, or even having, um, a, uh, you know, cancer treatments, um, you know, delayed. So we just, it's going to be a long road of recovery, even if this went disappeared tomorrow.
Understood. Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner O'Dea?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, so Rita, thank you for joining us. Last little section here.
Yeah, go to my slides, please.
Yeah, go to my slides, please. Yeah, okay, thank you. So this slide shows our COVID vaccination rates across the state. Deschutes County is at 76% of the 18-plus population. You asked earlier on about the state of Oregon. Oregon is at 73%, so we are actually doing better than the entire state. But that notwithstanding, we are still encouraging vaccinations so that we can get closer to 100% of the eligible population. We are currently at 6,386 per 10,000 population for Deschutes residents. So the more we advocate for people to get vaccinated, the more we can move more towards the 100% mark. I know not everybody's eligible for vaccinations, but at least if we can get closer to 100% of the eligible population, I believe that would reduce our hospitalizations and our mortalities. Next slide. So for this graph, it shows vaccination by numbers. So weekly doses that Deschutes County is providing to the community, as well as providers, pharmacies and PCPs mainly. So Deschutes County's mandate mainly is on vulnerable population. So we are focusing more on marginalized communities, houseless communities, BIPOC communities, people with no primary care provider, homebound and homeless populations. So for the first week, the week of July 25th to 31st, Deschutes County provided 13% of the total weekly doses. For the second week, we provided 7% of the total weekly doses. For the third week, we provided 8%. Fourth week was 9%. The fifth week, we provided 10%. And weeks six and seven, we provided 11% for each of those. So I would say that from this graph, we are functioning very well as a safety net provider. Next slide. So this is a bar graph showing vaccine by age group. From this bar graph, you can see that the 79 age group has the highest vaccination rates, and the 12 to 17 age group has the lowest vaccination rate. And this is for obvious reasons. We do know that this was a group that was, that was the last to receive approval for vaccinations. And also, we have the 12 to 14-year-old age group embedded in this category, and they need a parental consent to be able to get vaccinations. Next slide. So we are currently providing vaccines for immunocompromised folks already. There are discussions by FDA and CDC about potential approval of booster doses for the general population. Although the three COVID vaccines that are out there for our community are effective, there has been data recently that shows that protection against asymptomatic mild and moderate disease is decreasing over time. So there may be a need for us to be able to administer booster doses. So there are questions, people, we've heard a lot of questions from the community about the difference between third doses and booster doses. So this slide, in this slide, we just wanted to be able to provide an overview of what the difference is. So for third doses, those are mostly for moderately to severely immunocompromised folks, especially the aged. Most of the aged we found in this age group. And for booster doses, it's for the general population. So that would be for people whose immunity are fading after they've completed a first vaccine series. So for the mRNA vaccines, that will be after the second dose. And for the Johnson &amp; Johnson and other single-dose vaccines, that would be after the first dose. Next slide. So for the immunocompromised third doses, we are offering it to people who have been receiving, who have been receiving active cancer treatment for tumors or cancer of the blood, people who have received an organ transplant or taking medicine to suppress their immune system, people receiving stem cell transplant within the last two years or who are taking medication to suppress their immune system, for moderately or severe, for moderate or severe primary immunodeficiency, advanced or untreated HIV patients, and people with active treatment or on high dose of corticosteroids. So these are, this is not a comprehensive list. There are other people who may qualify who are not on this list. So we are strongly encouraging these sets of people to get an additional dose of vaccine to help with their, to boost their immune system. Next slide. So for booster dose planning, we've actually started planning on that, not just for booster doses, but also for third doses. We know that it's not been approved for us to give third doses yet, but to be proactive, we've started planning for that, as well as booster doses. So what we know currently about booster doses is that boosters will likely be approved for six to eight months post-second dose, or post-first dose for Johnson &amp; Johnson and other single-dose vaccines. So currently, our pharmacies, PCPs, community partners, and Deschutes County pop-up and standing clinics are providing these booster doses to the eligible population that I mentioned earlier on. So those with immunocompromis, those that are immunocompromised. What, we are waiting for more information as the FDA and CDC continue to deliberate about booster doses as well as third doses. There is a meeting coming on, on September 17th. So we would, we are hoping to be able to find answers to some questions that we've got from the community the past week since we started providing booster doses. So we are hoping to know who will be eligible, when people will be able to receive their doses, and what dosage it would be, whether those will remain the same. Next slide, please. So for COVID vaccines, we are encouraging pregnant women to get vaccinated. Pregnancy has not been found to be a contraindication for receiving COVID vaccines. Vaccines can be taken during pregnancy, breastfeeding, even people that are planning to get pregnant. We've got a lot of questions from the community about whether the people can take COVID vaccines when, if they are planning to get pregnant. There's been so many myths going around and conspiracy theories about how COVID affects your ability to get pregnant. And these are all, have not been founded, have not been found to be true. So we are encouraging pregnant women and people who are planning to get pregnant to receive COVID vaccines. They are totally safe during pregnancy. There's no data to say, to be able to prove otherwise. Next slide. So for Deschutes County, we, as a safety net provider, we continue to provide support for community members and partners so that they can also be able to provide vaccines. We partnered with Deschutes County Jail to provide some vaccines there, long-term care facilities, homebound folks, substance use disorder patients, and behavioral health patients, all places that we've had partnerships with to be able to provide vaccines. Next slide. So these are community providers that we can get vaccines from. They are available, vaccines are available, they are free, no insurance is needed, no ID card is needed. And wait times are pretty much very, very short. For Deschutes County pop-up clinics, we try to make the wait times as short as possible to encourage people that are busy to still be able to come in for a vaccine. Next slide. For our clinics, we still do have standing clinics and pop-up clinics. For the standing clinics, we have Mondays from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Sisters Firehouse. On Tuesdays, from 5:00 to 7:00, at the Wall Street Service Building. On Wednesdays, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Bend Library. And then at Redmond, we have clinics from 9:30 to 11:30 at the Redmond City Hall. In Lepine, we have clinics on Tuesdays from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Next slide. Yeah, so I am sure that most of us on this platform have got a shot. Let's continue to encourage people to get vaccinated. Although, as Emily and Dr. Johnson mentioned, there are treatments now to reduce the burden of COVID, but vaccinations are still first line if we need to protect our community. So Deschutes County is committed to removing every barrier that could mitigate vaccinations. So any monetary costs or time constraints, we try to remove any barriers around that. And also, our staff are very competent to educate patients as they come in for vaccination, dispel all the myths and all the conspiracy theories so that people will be able to receive vaccinations safely. End of presentation. Any questions?
Thank you very much. As I say, the whole presentation has got lots of information in it today, so thank you. Any other questions or thoughts?
Thank you.
Rita, I did have one question about vaccination support at the jail. So are we, are we providing assistance there for, you know, people who are in jail to get vaccinated? Or is that for staff to get vaccinated?
So we are providing vaccination for inmates. So we do set up pop-up clinics, and then we coordinate with the jail staff, and then we go in, and then we have people already scheduled to get vaccinated. So these are mostly inmates. So we coordinate with the staff, and then we pick a time that is suitable, and then we go out there with vaccines to vaccinate them.
And like, what is the participation rate?
I'm not sure about that. I don't know if Prestol is on. She probably will be able to give you information on that, or I could provide that to you at a later time.
That would be great, thank you.
But it's a changing population, people coming and going.
Yeah, no, I mean, you got to do that on a regular basis to be able to actually offer, you know, keep people covered. And, you know, if people are just initiating vaccination when they become an inmate, then they don't really have the protection. I mean, you know, they don't have full protection until, you know, conceivably after they're already not an inmate anymore, so.
Okay, thank you so much. At this time, next agenda item is discussion and consideration of a draft for vaccine requirements of county employees in Health Services and Community Justice.
Good morning, Commissioners, for the record. Eric Crop, Deputy County Administrator. Joining us on Zoom is Chris Bell from the Legal Office, and here in person is Kathleen Hinman, our HR Director. Before you today is discussion of a draft policy. We had a small work group that included HR, legal, community justice, and Health Services to help draft this policy. I'm going to break my, I'm going to cover three main items on my presentation. The first is to walk the board through the Organ Administrative Rules, which this policy is intended to implement. Next, I'll talk about the exceptions. And then lastly, I'll talk a little bit about the federal regulations. And you heard about that this morning from Emily Freeman.
So one question to kind of start. So the OAR rules are through the Organ Health Authority, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
They're disseminated down from OHA. So these, and these are rules that are, like, emergency rules that are effective now, or a date in the near future?
They're effective now, the rules are effective now, but the rules contain some dates that are, you know, the biggest date is one in October, October 18th. Also, I'd like to point out, in conversations with the Sheriff's Office, they are exempted from this policy, and they are working on their own policy.
When we say exempted, is that the fact that the Sheriff's Office is taking that responsibility separate than the Board of Commissioners? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, yes. The OARs, the OARs apply to the Sheriff's Office because of the jail and the medical services provided in the jail medical unit. But the Sheriff's Office intends to draft their own policy to implement the OARs.
Great, thank you.
So to start with, there are two OARs. One is to, one that covers healthcare settings. And healthcare settings has a very broad definition. It includes both public health and behavioral health. So anytime, so when it talks about healthcare setting, that applies to all of our Health Services Department and all of the facilities that Health Services is currently in. The second OAR talks about school settings, and that applies to our juvenile detention center because educational services takes place in our juvenile detention center. And then on top of that, juvenile detention, or the Juvenile Justice Division also has a healthcare setting because on the second floor of juvenile counseling services occur. So the policy on the vaccine mandate applies to all of our Health Services Department employees and all of our juvenile division employees. So on page three of the policy, what the OAR says is by a certain date, employees that work in these settings need to be vaccinated. So the draft policy walks through on page three, under Policies and Procedures, under A, that in Health Services, all personnel are required to be vaccinated. And then it also talks about all juvenile justice employees requiring to be vaccinated. And then it walks through other situations where you have other employees who are not assigned to those buildings, but may work in those buildings. For those departments, and we specifically call out the Facilities Department and IT Department, all personnel are strongly encouraged to be vaccinated, but are not required under this policy. And then IT and facilities will work when they deploy staff to a healthcare setting or to juvenile. The first priority will be to send vaccinated staff to perform work orders. And then if a vaccinated staff person is not available, they will work with those departments on a safety plan. If the staff person is in the facility for less than an hour, they do not need to be vaccinated. But anytime a staff person goes into a healthcare setting, they'll be required to wear an N95 mask. So that's a way to kind of mitigate the risk. The exceptions to the policy are on page five. And what the OARs provide is there are two exceptions. One is for a medical exception. So an employee to get a medical exception to, so that they don't have to receive the vaccination, they would need to have a medical provider fill out a form, and the medical provider would have to describe how the employee's medical condition impacts their ability to receive the vaccination. And then the second type of an exception is a religious exception. And for that form, the employee describes how their religious belief, describes their religious belief and how it affects their ability to receive a vaccination. If an employee fills out either one of these exception forms, it'll get turned into HR, and HR will work with legal and risk to evaluate these. If an employee receives an exception, then the OARs allow the employee to work in one of these settings, but extra steps have to be taken to mitigate risks. And those can include wearing an N95 mask, physically distancing, and other things like that. physically distancing, and other things like that. On page five of the policy, at the top, the way the current policy is written, it gives a deadline date of October 18th for employees who are impacted to be fully vaccinated by that date. And looking at this, again, I would actually recommend that we change that so that the October 18th date is when employees need to, for an unvaccinated employee, when they would need to start the process to become vaccinated. Because we're simply running out of time for employees, for an unvaccinated employee to get vaccinated by October 18th, we're simply running out of time. And it minimizes their opportunities for the Moderna and the other vaccine other than the Johnson &amp; Johnson. So that's one recommendation, one change I recommend.
Are there dates in the OARs that, you know, you need to be fully vaccinated, you know, with the time periods involved by a certain date?
Yeah, the OARs give that fully, that date of October 18th to be fully vaccinated. But again, I recommend that we state that an unvaccinated person needs to start, at least start the process by then. And there's ways to mitigate that risk. And then also, on that same page, under section C towards the middle of the page, it does state that personnel who are subject to and fail to comply with the policy are subject to release or discharge from employment. And we understand that's a big deal. And we have a lot of employees who are concerned about this requirement and the possible impacts. But that is part of the policy.
Because the OAR requires it?
It won't allow them to work in a healthcare setting or juvenile setting. I mean, the potential, there is a possibility where somebody can work remotely 100% of the time and never come into one of those, where they wouldn't have to get vaccinated. But that creates such an operational challenge that we don't foresee that happening.
So there's some pretty interesting policy choices in here. I mean, this is a proposed draft policy to be signed by the county administrator. So, you know, we're the board just digesting all the parts and pieces of this at this time.
Yes, the mechanism is on our administrative policies. The board approves county administrator signature on the policy. The other thing I'd like to mention is because this policy impacts working conditions, it's a mandatory subject to bargaining with our union or unions. For this policy, it only impacts ASME because that's, they represent health services and the juvenile division employees. I have sent a draft. I did send a draft to ASME last week. Got a few comments. And then we will need to show them, if there's any changes from the board, we would need to show them those changes. And again, ASME has a right to bargain the impact of this policy. So there's that component as well.
So what does that look like? As in, if it's a draft policy, it's not final. There might be edits or something. And if there was, you know, a bargaining, you know, issue to be discussed, could it be discussed in draft form? Or does it need to be finalized before they would be engaged?
It could be discussed in draft form.
Yeah, okay.
I sent ASME the draft that you're looking at. And then any changes would need to be given back to ASME, and they would have a right to bargain those changes as well.
Okay.
And then the last thing I want to mention is the federal regulations. As you heard from Emily this morning, the federal OSHA is drafting regulations on vaccine mandates for employers with more than 100 people. Once those federal regulations are drafted, Oregon OSHA has been 30 days to draft their regulations that would impact Deschutes County. And the Oregon OSHA regulations need to be at least as restrictive or more than the federal regulations. So far, one main difference that we've heard about is under the state OARs, for an unvaccinated employee, instead of getting vaccinated, they are not allowed to do weekly testing. That was mentioned by the governor when she first talked about this requirement. That, you know, the governor talked about employees would either need to get vaccinated or have a weekly test and show negative. But that changed when these OARs came out. And so that weekly test, negative test in lieu of a vaccination is no longer available. The federal regulations, it sounds like they may contain that option. So we're, we will likely, once the Oregon OSHA regulations come out, incorporate those into this policy and come back to the board to update the policy to incorporate, you know, the regulations that Oregon OSHA comes up with. And so we could have, we will have employees in health services and juvenile under the OARs, the state OARs, and then other employees under the federal or Oregon OSHA requirements. Also, just to mention on page four, there's a typo. The last bullet on page four, the subheading or the heading is Community Justice. And then the bullet reads, "Any unvaccinated personnel entering a health department facility must wear a K or N95," and that should read juvenile. I copied the verbiage from above, but forgot to change that. So that's another change. I don't think ASME will want to bargain that change, but.
Yeah.
So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Eric, are we, what are we hearing from our department heads of these affected departments about this policy?
They are supportive of the approach, and they are also concerned about, you know, the impact to staff and possibly losing staff. And that's also something the union has brought up as well. You know, IT and facilities is, we worked closely with those two department heads in terms of how do we, you know, does this apply to, does this require all of those employees to be vaccinated? We walked through that scenario. And ultimately, are recommending not to have that requirement. And Joe and Lee are supportive of how it's drafted now. Most of our IT folks are vaccinated, and about half of our facility folks are. That's not based on any, that's more based on some estimates.
And do we have a sense of, or do we have estimates for the affected divisions and departments, the health services and juvenile justice?
I don't, I don't. I mean, I would presume that health has probably a little bit of a higher vaccination than juvenile. But also, you know, it also probably reflects the general population of Deschutes County as well.
Have they given out the new numbers for the hospital vaccination? Because I think about a month ago, it was 76% vaccinated at St. Charles. Have we seen a new number, I wondered? I mean, we definitely don't want to lose people that are working at our hospital.
Have you heard any numbers?
Okay.
We haven't. We could check with health services to see if they know.
Are you saying that the federal requirement may make it where you could still do the weekly testing? We don't know that?
We don't know that. I mean, that was mentioned in, when the, you know, President made his announcement. But until we actually see the federal regulations, we won't know.
Be aware, even if it does, the state regulation could be more strict.
Right, yes.
The governor's already indicated in, through the OARs, through OHA, that testing's not an option. So I think the good bet is it might carry through when the federal OSHA regulations get processed by the state OSHA and pushed out to local jurisdictions, including Deschutes County.
I know the hospital in Springfield, they already made it mandatory, and they lost, they lost employees, I know.
That certainly had, certainly a downside impact, yeah. So do we have a general estimate of, are there a subset of employees that have had COVID, been on COVID leave? And I'm referring to antibodies and, you know, being, you know, coming back from COVID and then being required to have a vaccine is.
I don't know the number of employees who have been COVID positive. I mean, we have had a handful of workers' comp claims related to COVID exposure and possible contraction of COVID in the workplace. And then, I mean, we've, I don't know the number.
Yeah, so I mean, that's antibody testing, and that's the next step. So, you know, this is an Oregon Health Authority and Governor's Office effort to really ratchet up the pressure for vaccinations and the authorities that the Oregon Health Authority has through the school district and health departments. You know, we're receiving this as basically a mandate to impose mandates from the state. You know, I mean, this is just a tough spot to be in. Yeah.
Yes, this is a mandate. You know, I would like us all to recognize that we had opportunities to incentivize vaccination and encourage vaccination to reach levels of community vaccination that would have precluded the need to do mandates. If we could have gotten to, you know, the mid 80s in the state of Oregon for vaccination rates, we wouldn't have to be considering measures like this right now. But, yeah, this is, this is by no means perfect. But to achieve the levels of vaccination, you know, to achieve the levels of vaccination necessary for us to really contain COVID, I see this as an appropriate measure.
So going back to the slides that Dr. Johnson provides, you know, there's a kind of a future estimate of activity. It looks like, you know, it's going to be a few months, and we're on the downhill slide possibly of the current outbreak. So, you know, in the big picture, when we see those estimates, it's good to know that, yeah, we're gonna, the expectation is it's going to go down. As I said, we thought it was going down months ago, and then we had this Delta surge. So just acknowledging this is a bit more information that we received today on the topic. Commissioner Dyer, any comments, thoughts?
No, I just was thinking about, what was it? How many thousands of people were watching the Oregon Ducks play in Ohio the other day? Shoulders to shoulder without masks on. I mean, they were outside, but we're, they must not have a Delta outbreak in Ohio, I guess. Because we definitely are looking at a different situation here. But we are at 16, almost 16,000 positives in the county. And per the Israeli study, the antibodies you get when you actually recover from COVID are like, the Israeli study says 27 times more effective. And I'm wondering if those count at all. And where is that herd immunity that we kept being referred to? Needed to be like 83%. It seems like, gosh, it truly doesn't all make sense.
So then, with the federal government and the President's declarations, do we have any insight into what's going to be processed there? I guess, has there been any information? I don't have a feel for that.
There hasn't been beyond what was published in terms of.
The media.
The President's talking points and.
So then, religious exemption and medical exemption, those going to both be in place and possibilities?
Yes, the OARs require it. And OHA has forms for those, which we would use, and process those as they came in.
So if we had medical or medical exemption, staff members in those departments, what does that look like?
If a staff member received either exemption, then we would work with the department on safety measures so that they could work safely in their department. That could include ensuring that they wear an N95 or a surgical mask and other. OHA actually has frequently asked questions and lists examples of mitigating, ways to mitigate the risk. So we would work closely with the department, the host department of that employee, to ensure the safety.
So Association of Oregon Counties, there was a discussion about, you know, resolutions or paperwork to the governor saying that we're going to lose a lot of staff here. We're going to define it as emergency in our local jurisdiction. So that was a discussion that had happened at AOC a couple days ago. There are a few counties that are talking about this. But that is the reality. The fact that, you know, if we lose staff in this critical time, we're going to lose some capacity to provide services. And the health department is one of them during COVID. So ends up being this kind of catch 22 about, you know, a subset of people holding on to the value of personal responsibility rights, making your own medical choice, and government coming in saying, you know, you're not going to be working here if you don't get a vaccine. I'm just laying out the facts. Pretty tough choice.
Yes.
If not for all the misinformation about vaccination out in the world today, this choice doesn't, it really wouldn't have to be this tough.
So are we looking for board acceptance or approval for administrator signature? Is that the idea?
Ultimately. I mean, today, I don't recommend the board approving this because of the bargaining piece of it. But certainly, if the board had any changes to the policy, that would be helpful. And we can take those back to ASME. If the board doesn't have any, then we could, we can continue working with ASME and then bring back a final version for board consideration.
So I could sugar down the path of antibody testing for people that may have had COVID. You know, it does seem, I mean, that's a hard pill to swallow or injection to take, referring to a vaccine if you've already had COVID. So I mean, what about that logic path?
You know, from the medical side, I can't really address.
Yeah, I don't either.
The OARs don't allow that as a substitute, but, you know.
It's really sad, though, that it has been ignored. Or, you know, people don't see it. And yet, studies are indicating that if you've had COVID, yeah, for personal experience, my niece got married Friday night, and her mother-in-law had the Moderna shot to fly from Hawaii and had the Bell's Palsy reaction to it and was not able to attend the wedding. So, you know, I see it on that side. And then I know people that have had COVID pretty strongly. And I would really, you know, appreciate if they had an antibodies test were given the recognition that they're really actually probably in a better place than some of us that have had the shot. I mean, I think that's important.
I mean, I'd be happy to ask Health to, you know, follow up and send the board an email about that.
This is the argument that if you have had COVID, you have antibodies. I mean, that's, I find that compelling. If we use it just as a stall tactic to try to block, you know, block these state mandates, I don't think that's very helpful. But we could, if the board is seriously interested in understanding infection-based antibody presence in the population, I could see us actually making some investments right now. I mean, I don't, I don't have a good sense, you know, to suss that out for our community. So we could, we could, you know, go on a mission to go and buy a bunch of, you know, antibody tests, administer those to people who have been infected so that we hack. that we actually have some data to talk with the state about what we think is the effectiveness of infection in generating antibodies and getting us towards the level of herd immunity that's needed.
There's actually a lab, there's only one lab in Deschutes County that does do the antibody testing. It's already here, it's already working and the woman that works there recommended that I go and just have my antibodies checked to see where I was at and I thought, she said, "You might be at twenty, but people that have had COVID," she goes, "Normally they test out at eight hundred, somewhere up there." So, it would, we would be really behooveless to follow through on that.
Well, I know that the Red Cross did a cycle of-
They were.
-antibody testing of some sort and I was able to give blood before and after being vaccinated and the second time it said, you know, detected or responsive to antibody testing or, you know, something, whatever. And I'm sure the science is evolving too. So, I mean, so Commissioner Chang, you mentioned if this is-
Nahad is watching and is available if, if the board would like to engage him in on that conversation or questions for him. Nahad is available.
You know, if I could just jump in before we go too far down that rabbit hole, I mean, that, be that as it may, the, the rules are going to be the rules and so unless you're willing to hang your hat on antibody issues to violate the rules or to not, you know, apply the rules, it's really just a lot of, you know, it's a theoretical discussion and it'd be great-
More theatrical.
It'd be great to dive into it deeper, but, yeah, it's not an exemption from applying either these OARs through, or, and it won't be an exemption unless something comes out of left field for what's going to come down from the current federal government mandate that's going through the state and then onto us. So, just sharing that with you, I don't know that it has any direct relevance to what's in front of you today.
Thank you very much. But, as I say, I mean, this is a point where we need to digest the fact that mandates for a subset of our employment are being, you know, required, you know, this vaccine requirement. So, Eric, you said, you know, this has been a good discussion. There's no real need to pass or approve this at this point, but we're getting close, though. Is that kind of where-
Yes, I would like to, to bring it back next week and have that conversation with AFSCME and any direction or input from the board at this point would be helpful.
Can, can you, can you back out a timeline for us, Eric, to, to meet requirements in October, someone who has not initiated a vaccination cycle yet, when would they have to start?
They would, they would need to start, I get mixed up between the Moderna and-
Twenty-one days.
Twenty-one, twenty-eight.
I think they, one of, one of them, the deadline has already passed and then I think Moderna or Pfizer-
Pfizer's twenty-one, Moderna's twenty-eight, so.
Okay, so Pfizer would be like in the next couple of days and then, of course, Johnson and Johnson, they have more time on that.
So, we, we don't, I mean, I, that doesn't suggest to me that we actually have time to wait until next week to bring this back.
Well, we need to because of the bargaining piece of it with AFSCME.
But I'd be interested to know what, yeah, the representative groups are thinking on this, you know, we, it's only one of our unions, but there are multiple unions-
Yeah.
And the sheriff's office.
And the sheriff's office has been in communication with the sheriff's union, the Deschutes County Sheriff's Employees Association.
But I think it's important to signal to employees which direction we think this is going so that they have adequate time to take whatever actions they, they need to. So I, I, you know, we can, we can bring this back next week, but I, I think it would be helpful or, I, I think it would be helpful for staff to have a sense of the board's inclinations on this policy now.
Just FYI, you don't meet again until Monday, the 27th.
Yeah, we can happen now anyways.
I mean, if I could add too, not to talk a whole lot, but in terms of bargaining, yeah, there's a, there's a mandate in the state to bargain this, but when it's law that's imposed upon you, there's not a whole lot of wiggle room on the part of the union. They could say they don't like it, but if it's mandatory law that's being put forth from on high that says thou shall do it, they, they don't have a whole lot of room to, to finesse around that. So, while there's an obligation to bargain with them, negotiate, discuss, I don't know that they could say, "No, sorry, I'm not interested." They don't trump the OARs, they don't trump the governor, they don't trump the president ultimately when that makes its way down. So, keep that in mind as well in terms of, as Commissioner Chang indicates, I think the board could certainly give an indication of what its feelings are and that doesn't interfere with the bargaining team reaching out to AFSCME and discussing this issue with them. I mean, I think the board's position ultimately going to be, we're going to follow the law, we're a nation of laws and if the law says we do X, we got to do X until we get the law changed if we don't like it.
Yeah, I've determined I'm going to follow the law. I mean, you know, so I'm, I'm there.
Yes.
You know, the only other option is to, you know, make a, you know, a document or whatever, you know, whatever version of something to say, you know, we're not going to follow the law because a state of emergency, because that was what was discussed at AOC. We, you know, so then think about what we're doing here, mandatory vaccines, termination if you don't, we're following the law of the state of Oregon on the, a point where we just got information that the numbers are going to be going lower and-
Maybe.
And, you know, having previously had COVID, you know, we're still going to require a vaccine or you, you can be discharged from employment. What a terrible position to be in, you know, I sure wouldn't want to do this to our employees of Deschutes County and the great service that's provided for the citizens. But, I mean, I do support the law, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that. I definitely, you know, object and receive this OAR implementation. That is where I'm at. Commissioner Derry?
Aren't we caught?
Well, yeah.
We're caught. I know that, didn't we have like fifty-six openings and the health services are ready for physicians that were unfilled and what is this going to do? But hopefully they can get a religious or a medical if they have issues with getting the vaccine. Yeah, I just, I hate to further short our, our staff.
We, we played a role in putting ourselves in this position. We had opportunities to incentivize and encourage higher levels of vaccination over the last eighteen months. Well, I guess vaccines haven't, haven't been available that whole time, but at least since January and we didn't, we didn't do more and that is why, to get us to the levels of vaccination that are needed to contain COVID, we are seeing hard-driving mandates now. So, I, you know, trapped, I, I don't think that is a fair characterization of the situation. I, we played a role in putting ourselves in this position and this is not a, this is not a great choice, but it is, you know, at this point in the process, these are, these are some of the only choices that are left to us.
You know, there's only three counties that have a higher vaccination rate than we do. If you look at the chart, there's a seventy-nine, a seventy-eight, and another seventy-nine and then we are at seventy-six. So, honestly, you know, look at Israel, what happened with their vaccination rate, they were up at the eighties and I believe Iceland too and everyone has, seeming to have their own issues. I mean, COVID Delta definitely is a very impactful animal, but, yeah, we, we're third in the state, so tied for third in the state. I'm proud of, you know, what people have done here and, you know, okay, we're not first, we're not at a hundred, but truly we are vaccinated in Deschutes County when compared to the other thirty-six counties.
And I'm sure the people who are vaccinated, who've made that choice to be vaccinated, would really appreciate it if, if another slice of the remaining population of the county would choose to join them. So, I'd like to move approval of county administrator's signature of the temporary policy for COVID-19 vaccination requirement for county personnel in impacted departments.
So, do we need a motion on this topic at this time? It was mentioned to be discussed with AFSCME. If we don't do it today, we'll, we'd possibly do it on the 27th or the 29th, whether the next Monday or Wednesday?
Yeah, 27th or 29th.
Well, if the board doesn't approve it today, we'd definitely come back on the 27th. I mean, and just for clarification, does a motion include the, the suggested changes that I have and also, I mean, we would, we would need to work with AFSCME on-
Yeah, I'll, I'll modify that motion to include the, the recommended changes from Eric, our Deputy County Administrator, Eric Ropp, and also to address any concerns that come up in the negotiations with AFSCME.
We can handle that administratively with AFSCME.
Well, so at this time, I would rather, you know, have a, I mean, if we need to vote on this, have a vote in a week and a half, you know, digest the fact that the mandate is in place from the state, Deschutes County is receiving this required mandate and policies being worked on, it's in draft form at this time. I'm not opposed to leaving it there for today.
But if the board doesn't approve it, I would recommend that we send out messaging to employees to say the board's intent is to, just so that-
And, yeah, as I say, I mean, I'm not interested in breaking, you know, the, the requirement of these OARs, so that's the other, you know, policy choice at this time. So that's, that's true, you know, this is draft with the intention of following the law of the state of Oregon.
It is important to follow the law, is it not? And maybe in the next, I would hope in the next week, well, not that it's going to really matter, but if the federal OSHA actually comes out with something, you know, it may give us a bit more idea what the state, I mean, is the state really already impact, you know, they've already said what they're going to say and it doesn't really ma, matter what the federal government says other than they, they could make theirs even more.
The state is required to adopt the federal regulations or be more restrictive.
Right, okay.
So there's been a motion, is there a, a second? I'm not willing to.
I'd, I'd really like to wait till Monday, the 27th, if you don't mind.
There's no second at this time, just acknowledging where we're at.
But we will send out email to staff to say, you know, the board intends to follow the OARs and-
Not break the law.
Yes.
Not break the law.
Vaccine requirement dates and-
But if they are medical or religious accommodations, that we are including that, so just let them know. Right, and they really, it's a good idea, Eric, you've already thought about the fact that there's not a time enough to have the Pfizer, I think the Moderna numbers are actually maybe better in the long run, but, you know, people have to make their plans.
All right. Are we all set?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you for doing that communications with staff so that they understand what choices they need to make and they can, they can take appropriate actions.
Okay, at this time, our last item before a lunch break for a couple of other items this afternoon. This is consideration of support for Vietnam War Memorial at the Oregon State Capitol Grounds and Carl Bass has joined us, I want to thank him for joining us. This is Vietnam Veterans of America, VVA representation from our Southern Deschutes County Band of Brothers. This is, this started off with a direct letter and we might have all got this, I just, I don't know if I was the only one, so, to Commissioner Debohne, Deschutes County about the memorial that the state legislature has authorized, it's a, you know, the memorial plan with some funding from the state and about four hundred thousand dollars and a couple of counties have already acted on this, Lynn and Klamath County and maybe others since this discussion started. Carl, do you want to say hi? You, you don't need to take, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, you're doing good, thank you very much. My name is Carl Bass, I'm the president of the Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 821 in Le Pine, Oregon. This memorial actually is of Vietnam Veterans of America, it started as a-
Okay.
In, excuse me, in the Portland and the Salem area. Some of my notes, I just tried to write down some things about this thing, is the Vietnam War really was a, you know, was a, sort of the bloodiest and most controversial wars we ever had because there was a lot of unrest at the time. There was over three million Americans, military personnel who served in the war, over fifty-eight thousand of them died. Of those, there were seven hundred and ten Oregonians that passed away because of the war. They weren't also treated that good when they got back. You know, there is the Vietnam Memorial Wall in Washington DC, which is quite a thing to see. And there are also other memorials, like there's one in, the Washington Park, which has all the names of them on, but there's not a single memorial that's on state property and that's what really this is, they want to do. And what they plan to do is it would be, it's going to be located in a very serene atmosphere that incorporates existing Oregon trees and other natural features. It'd be on a half acre of Capitol Grounds, which will be close to the World War II Memorial. It's going to have a bunch of black granite columns that will have the names of all the seven hundred and ten Oregonians that, that died, listing with also their hometown. It's going to include a statue honoring the struggles of the returning Vietnam veterans, which were, there was a lot going on in those days. It's also going to have educational sculptures and panels describing the war itself, the, what happened to it, a lot of on the home front, what was going on there and also talking about all the nurses, the medical personnel that had to put up with it and there's, there's a lot of things going on there. This is a nonprofit organization that they, they figure about three million dollars it's going to take to finish this thing up because of COVID, it was supposed to have been done this year, but because of COVID, it's not, now it's about 2023. And they, the best line I got was the Vietnam War Memorial, the state capitol will be a place to remember the sacrifice of others, to learn about this war that divided this country and to pause and reflect on our own liberties and have, have come at such a great price. And I think that we need a place like this for the Vietnam veterans.
Yes, thank you so much and, you know, thanks for your service and the Band of Brothers and all the gentlemen and ladies and gentlemen supporting each other in these times.
Right.
Thank you, Carl, so much. I actually had someone from Hepner died when I was in high school and he was, he's on Wall Space 43 in Washington DC and never forget that man and I just, you know, they were so horribly treated when you came back and I, I just, I feel like that was just a really sad time in American history, so.
I've got over-
Thank you for doing this today.
Over seven names on that wall that I recently-
Yeah, seven hundred and ten, you said?
Speaking of that-
Yes.
Speaking of the wall?
Yeah, speaking of the wall, I brought some posters, if you, I can leave here to maybe people can look at or pass out or post.
Sure.
The wall, the Traveling Wall that heals, got one right there.
Got one.
Will be in Le Pine, starting actually September 29th through October 3rd. It's open 24 hours, if you want to come and visit the wall. I got night shifts, so I'll be there. And it's going to have, there's going to be a procession from, I think, starting at Gordy's going to where the, at the park where it's going to be at, there's going to be flag ceremonies and everyone's welcome. I'd like to see if you have anything-
This is the only stop in Oregon and it was planned to come through last year too, so that was, it was delayed from last year, but this is the only stop in the state of Oregon this year, it sounds like.
And if you know the, the young lady who's pushing this has done an excellent job.
Yeah. Yeah, Michelle Hoffman, and I saw her yesterday, that's why I'm up to speed on this also.
She made sure I brought some of these.
There we go.
I wanted to ask a couple of questions about the, the Wall that Heals event.
Sure.
First off, what, you mentioned the procession, what time, what time?
Uh, have to read this, it tells me here. They got a time, they're kind of depending on whatever time it actually arrives in Le Pine, because I really am not so sure of the exact time that's going to be-
Yeah, that may need to be published because it is a trucking-
Right.
-event to get it to that spot, so when they know when it'll be arrived, maybe. So, September 29th, but I'm not sure when it is.
I'm not sure exact time right myself right now. To be honest about that, I just know that they, you know, that besides closing the roads and bringing in almost all the motorcycle groups, organizations they can find to be part of this thing to escort it in town.
It'll be pretty patriotic, very patriotic.
A very good thing. And if you'd like, I should also mention, you know, in Le Pine, we do things, our veterans, the Vietnam Veterans of America, the Banner Brothers and the veterans of foreign wars, we, every time we have a parade, which would be like the Fourth of July Independence Parade or the Veterans Day Parade, we give American flags to everyone along parade route. We've done this and when I, what I love about that the most is that I've never found any on the ground. I got, when we pass them out to the people, they're always excited about it, they all love them, I never see them on the ground.
Yep.
ground. And then a small thing, too, is they're also all American-made flags. Small thing.
Well, so just, don't go ahead.
My, my, my other question about the, the Wall that Heals, I, I'm under the impression that the county had made a contribution to support the event, but that was in a prior year or some...
It was $3,000 and it was a couple budgets ago.
Yeah, I, you know, I was tracking, I was tracking when the event was supposed to happen last year, but, and was postponed. But I, I wanted to make sure that the county was investing in the Wall that Heals event, you know, before we considered, you know, investing in a memorial in Salem, which is, is good. But I mean, having, you know, making a county investment in commemorating the, the service of, you know, all of our Vietnam veterans here in our home community, in my mind, is, is the first priority.
So, as I say, the letter I received on this topic was from Steve Bates, the President of the Fund for a Vietnam Memorial on the Oregon State Capitol Grounds. I did speak to him, and he was very enthusiastic to know that we were going to have this discussion. And then also, as I say, Carl Bass and I know each other, so this is from the Band of Brothers of, of Lepine area. But I mean, Ben and Redmond and Sisters and all the areas in, in central Oregon, Deschutes County that we represent, you know, you're representing them all today by being here.
You have a very active group of veterans in this county.
Yes.
Almost 15,000.
And I called them yesterday, so I'm happy to have them here. You know, I was like, oh, Carl, I got an idea, I need you to be here. Okay, so at this point, you know, if there's support, it's really just X amount of dollars, you know, is Deschutes County. And then I did talk to Tom about this, and there's probably a direct general fund, you know, check out of our, our bank account of the people of Deschutes County.
Carl, you may or may not, you know, have a handle on this, but I, I guess the question would be, do you, does, does the, the group have a suggested or, you know, a kind of specific requested amount to kind of add up to, add up to the whole? Like, what, what, what are the, you know?
I'm not really sure. I've, I've had presentations with them and talked to them. I know pretty much, because we, as a group of the Vietnam veterans, we gave them our, state chapter gave them money, good money, a lot of funds, I don't remember how much it was, but they were taking anything. Yeah.
And is the, is, did the state, is the state contributing any funds to, I, I know that they've made a space of it.
I've got facts on that. So August 6th, there was a, the bill, so this is approved this year in this legislative session. The site and the proposed design were approved by the legislature and signed by the governor just recently. There was a $400,000 investment from the state legislature, so that was done. And as of two weeks or so ago on a phone call, 622,000 is the total that was, you know, mentioned. So maybe more by now, but, you know, so, and a three and a half...
That has been raised or mentioned that...
It's been raised, and it's a $3.5 million project. That was the other bit of information. And I do know that Klamath County, our, our neighbor Klamath County put $5,000 in, you know, it was just mentioned, so I had that here, too. I would start with 5,000 and unless there's willingness to go more. So, you know, that's kind of my thought, is 5,000 to be the starting point for us at Deschutes County's, for the, representing the people.
I think I'm on board with that or more, but if I, if I could ask one other question, Carl, the design, the, or the, the complete memorial, how does it, how does it treat the, the other nation, Vietnam, North Vietnam? Or how does it, how does it talk about...
Remember, I know there's some things you can look online to talk about it, but I think a pretty much with respect. I'm not exactly sure what they talk about it, because it was, it was really not a war against the people of Vietnam, it was more against a war of the communism and everything else at the time. And I think that the people are, you know, people are people. I think it treats them pretty, I have to, I'm not so sure what all they do, but I know they...
There's a kind of a bold point of yours.
Yeah, because as, as you mentioned, that the war was extremely controversial and, and, you know, while I, I have, you know, great respect, you know, and, and want to honor the, the service of the people who, who served there, in, in my opinion, you know, it's very questionable whether it was a just war or not. So, I, I wouldn't, you know, I, I wouldn't want to, you know, well, individually, I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't not be, I wouldn't want to support something that kind of glorified the conflict itself.
I understand. I do know at our national conventions, which we had here in November this year, there are Vietnam, Vietnamese veterans that are there, that are members of the Vietnam Veterans of America, which I thought was, meeting them, you know, to me, changed the whole atmosphere, you know, that we accepted them as brothers in arms. Same as the Korean, because the South Korean people were there, too, soldiers.
So, so people who, you know, fought with the South Vietnamese Army and then, and then after that immigrated to the US?
Because they have as much right as everyone else, I think. Yeah.
Yeah, that, that, that's good to know, thank you.
I, I actually think we should give, donate 10,000 to it. It's, you know, looking at what Klamath County's dealing with this year with their water issue and everything, the fact that we have probably almost 15,000 veterans. I know not all of them have registered in, in this, in the county, but I, I know a lot of, you know, I know there's a lot of veterans, 14,000, so I'm sure it's over that. 10,000, I think, would be more appropriate, really. And they've got a ways to go, and maybe we can help with that later.
And I, yeah, that's, seems like an appropriate amount from Deschutes County, and definitely, you know, as, I was hesitant to start with some number, I didn't know where we want to go, but...
I would support that.
Okay, there we go. Okay, do you want to make that?
I move that we support the state siding with $10,000 from Deschutes County honoring our, the veterans of the Vietnam War.
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? Commissioner Dara?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. So one other note, you know, you mentioned it was a period of civic turmoil when troops came back. The last couple of years, it feels like there's a cycle, and this is 50 years later, and we seem to be in civic turmoil, you know, and so it's, and I was an infant at that time, as I say, thank you for your service, I wasn't in the military either. But this feel, feels like what I've read about in the history books, is my point, you know, 50 years later, civic turmoil. I think we're doing something like that again right now, so.
Well, if I remember right, it was April 30th, 1975, and this is the war, the Afghan War, that Sunday that basically civil failed, it was 46 years, three months, and I think 17 days from April 30th. And I don't know why that stuck in my mind, because it just seems like it was, being a Vietnam veteran who was in tears about that day, I felt like I had lost everything, or I had been defeated. I know how these, our troops feel.
Yeah, yeah. Amazing. Well, let's take time and learn from the past and honor the past and acknowledge what's going, well, exactly, acknowledge what's going on today also.
That was my feeling, is that, you know, we're repeating this thing, we need to listen to, or read history, and hear what's going on.
Truly, we're repeating history. I did walk over David's plaque in the cemetery in Hepner, like about three years ago, and, and I, you know, his parents got a divorce over his death. He was, you know, an amazing young man, and I think he was there for three months and then died. So, you know, what a loss. His whole family was devastated, and I know it only got worse for a lot of people.
Thank you.
I can understand.
Okay. Well, there we go, $10,000 towards the effort.
Good work.
Thanks for joining us, and it sounds like we'll, we'll all see you at the, at the, the Wall that Heals at some point.
Yes.
Have a great day.
Thank you very much. I'll leave these here, you guys can...
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
So at this time, we do have a couple of items after lunch, possible executive session or, okay, that's fine. So a couple of items for after lunch, and, yeah, yeah, it's straight up noon, so that'll work out well today. We'll reconvene at 1 o'clock.
Welcome back. This is our, what is it, September 15th. I gotta remember what date it is. Afternoon session. Item number 13, consideration of approval of ORMAP grant for the Information Technology Department GIS mapping software. So, yeah, Joe Sedoni, thanks for joining us.
Hi. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Joe Sedoni, County IT Director. Today, I bring before you an application for reimbursement grant from the ORMAP project in the amount of $1,560. Sorry about the small amount. But, so ORMAP, if you're not familiar with it, ORMAP is a fund that was created by the legislature back in 1999. And the purpose of the funding was to allow for the development of a statewide digital cadastral base map, meaning a map basically of tax lots statewide that contains value and ownership information. The fund provides reimbursement for efforts to counties for their efforts for maintaining and improving the accuracy of the information that they submit to the statewide map. And so this grant is for the development of a software tool that we provide to the ORMAP project for distribution to other jurisdictions. And the tool improves the efficiency of doing certain types of annotations to the GIS map. And it makes these annotations quite a bit easier. The county's been developing a set of tools for this purpose for ORMAP for many years, as long as I can remember. And over time, the software tools have been adopted as functions into the mapping software produced by ESRI. And so their use has been, our need to maintain them went away as their function's been folded into the software. And so we're down to this one tool. And we updated it for the latest version of the software. And what the application for is for reimbursement for the work that we did to update the software tool.
Great. Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Little amount relative to some of the big choices we make, but I mean, it's a good opportunity to reimburse for effort.
I know. I hate to leave the nickel on the table, but that's what we're doing here.
Well, I think it's really cool that you're tied into this statewide effort to, you know, provide this valuable spatial data tool.
So this is a consideration of grant application. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move approval of the ORMAP grant application in the amount of $1,560 by the Information Technology Department.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Joe, you were gonna say something.
No, I'm fine.
Okay, so anything else? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair Veltz, yes. There we go. Thanks for sharing.
Bye.
Item number 14, consideration of 2021 EOC A membership dues to Eastern Oregon Counties Association. This is a dues invoice for the amount of $12,500. And I can say that I haven't been able to prepare or bring anything since the last time we met, just because everything else that's happening. You know, let's compare notes on this now.
I still just have a lot of questions about what this investment does for us. So, you know, what is EOC A doing that AOC doesn't? You know, what are the initiatives that we're supporting through this? Or what topics is EOC A working on with these funds? What's the impact for Deschutes County?
Commissioner Dare, as I say, I...
Yes. Well, I do appreciate being part of the group. I noticed that the Eastern Oregon Economic Summit just had to be moved to June due to COVID. It was supposed to be, I think, the 9th and 10th of October, and we were actually invited to speak at that. It's part of our community organization. And actually, the fact that the state is adding more and more psychiatric beds on the other side of the mountain, I could maybe have this group help me with bringing some beds over here. I feel like, you know, I know that 14 counties have sent letters to different issues, and I do appreciate them. So, you know, that's one other area where truly they could be helpful.
Has EOC A been engaged in the discussion of mental health, mental or behavioral health beds in the past?
No, but they truly could be. They're part of where the problem is. We don't have any beds over here. And I keep seeing that they keep adding more beds on the other side of the mountain. And, you know, the state hospital is full, clearly, just like Dave told me. What is it? He had 213 filed cases for civil commitments, 213 in the last 12 and a half months. So, and I know, talking to other commissioners, they've agreed that it's truly a problem on our side of the mountain, too. And we really do need more recognition. So, I work with a lot of these people off and on, and I feel like they're definitely part of our message.
I mean, just pursuing that example a little bit further, I think of AOC as being extremely well set up and having a lot of the background and experience to address those kinds of concerns for us. And I don't see them as, you know, hostile to helping to get behavioral health beds on the east side of the mountains. If, so I guess I, I'm back to the question, you know, what can this group do for us that AOC can't if we ask them to?
The River Democracy Act was actually worked on extensively by this group with a lot of comments. I participated in a town hall. And, you know, when they have gulches that are designated as part of the River Democracy Act, it seems to be a bit of an overreach. And I know that perhaps maybe not for Deschutes County, but I know Cook County was incredibly impacted by that additional add-on to the River Democracy Act. So, they are our nearest neighbors.
I, I feel like the concerns that some of the other Eastern Oregon counties and other counties around the state have about the Rivers Democracy Act may be valid and significant for them. But honestly, I don't really see, I think that for Deschutes County, the proposed designations are largely symbolic, are not going to have a really meaningful impact on management. And to the extent that we've heard from anyone, any of our constituents about this, I feel like all we've heard are supportive comments. So, I kind of, the effort to kind of dig on the Rivers Democracy Act and fight the Rivers Democracy Act, I don't... I think we've spent a whole lot of time and money on that. That was not that necessary.
So, a couple of thoughts. The Forest Plan is what I've always held on to. And I think we're definitely in a spot where COVID is just putting everybody on our heels. The idea was, a couple of years ago, to be partners with the Eastern Oregon Counties Association in support of the Blue Mountain Forest Plan.
Welcome back. This is our, what is it? September 15th. I gotta remember what date it is. Afternoon session. Item number 13. A consideration of approval of ORMAP grant for the Information Technology Department GIS mapping software. So, yeah, Joe Sedoni, thanks for joining us.
Hi. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Joe Sedoni, County IT Director. Today, I bring before you an application for reimbursement grant from from the ORMAP project in the amount of $1,560. Sorry about for the small amount. But, so ORMAP, if you're not familiar with it, ORMAP is a fund that was created by the legislature back in 1999. And the purpose of the funding was to allow for the development of a statewide digital cadastral base map, meaning a map basically of tax lots statewide that contains value and ownership information. The fund provides reimbursement for efforts to counties for their efforts for maintaining and improving the accuracy of the information that they submit to the statewide map. And so this grant is for the development of a software tool that we provide to the ORMAP project for distribution to other jurisdictions. And the tool improves the efficiency of doing certain types of annotations to the GIS map. And it makes, you know, these annotations quite a bit easier. The county's been developing a set of tools for this purpose for ORMAP for many years, as long as I can remember. And over time, the software tools have been adopted as functions into the mapping software produced by Esri. And so their use has been, our need to maintain them went away as their function's been folded into the software. And so we're down to this one tool. And we updated it for the latest version of the software. And what the application for is for reimbursement for the work that we did to update the software tool.
Great. Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Little amount relative to some of the big choices we make, but I mean, it's a good opportunity to reimburse for effort.
I know. I hate to leave the nickel on the table, but that's that's what we're doing here.
Well, I think it's really cool that you're tied into this statewide effort to, you know, provide this valuable spatial data tool, so.
So this is a consideration of grant application. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move approval of the ORMAP grant application in the amount of $1,560 by the Information Technology Department.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Joe, you were gonna say something?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, so anything else? Seeing none. Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. There we go.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for sharing. Item number 14. Consideration of 2021 EOC A membership dues to Eastern Oregon Counties Association. This is a dues invoice for the amount of $12,500. And I can say that I haven't been able to prepare or bring anything since the last time we met, just because everything else that's happening. I don't know, you know, let's compare notes on this now.
I still just have a lot of questions about what this investment does for us. So, you know, what is EOC A doing that AOC doesn't? You know, what are the initiatives that we're supporting through this? Or what topics is EOC A working on with these funds? What's the impact for Deschutes County?
Commissioner Dare, as I say, I
Yes. Well, I do appreciate being part of the group. I noticed that the Eastern Oregon Economic Summit just had to be moved to June due to COVID. It was supposed to be, I think, the 9th and 10th of October. And we were actually invited to speak at that. It's part of our community organization. And actually, the fact that the state is adding more and more psychiatric beds on the other side of the mountain, I could maybe have this group help me with bringing some beds over here. I feel like, you know, I know that 14 counties have sent letters to different issues, and I do appreciate them. So, you know, that's one other area where truly they could be helpful.
Has EOC A been engaged in the discussion of mental health, mental or behavioral health beds in the past?
No, but they truly could be. They're part of what, where the problem is. We don't have any beds over here. And I keep seeing that they keep adding more beds on the other side of the mountain. And, you know, the state hospital is full. Clearly, just like Dave told me, what is it? He had 213 filed cases for
Civil commitments?
Civil commitments, 213 in the last 12 and a half months. So, and I know, talking to other commissioners, they've agreed that it's truly a problem on our side of the mountain, too. And we really do need more recognition. So, I work with a lot of these people off and on. And I feel like they're definitely part of our message.
I mean, just pursuing that example a little bit further, I think of AOC as being extremely well set up and having a lot of the background and experience to address those kinds of concerns for us. And I don't see them as, you know, hostile to hostile to helping to get behavioral health beds on the east side of the mountains. If, so I guess I, I'm back to the question, you know, what can this group do for us that AOC can't if we ask them to?
The River Democracy Act was actually worked on extensively by this group with a lot of comments. I participated in a town hall. And, you know, when they have gulches that are designated as part of the River Democracy Act, it seems to be a bit of an overreach. And I know that perhaps maybe not for Deschutes County, but I know Crepe County was incredibly impacted by that additional add-on to the River Democracy Act. So those, they are, you know, our nearest neighbors.
I, I feel like the concerns that some of the other Eastern Oregon and other counties around the state have about the Rivers Democracy Act may be valid and significant for them. But honestly, I don't really see, I think that for Deschutes County, the proposed designations are largely symbolic, are not going to have a really meaningful impact on management. And to the extent that we've heard from anyone, any of our constituents about this, I feel like all we've heard are supportive comments. So I kind of, the effort to kind of dig on the Rivers Democracy Act and fight the Rivers Democracy Act, I don't, I don't, I think we've spent a whole lot of time and money on that. That was not that necessary.
So, a couple of thoughts. The Forest Plan is what I've always held on to. And I think we're definitely in a spot where COVID is just putting everybody on our heels. The idea was, a couple of years ago, to be partners with the Eastern Oregon Counties Association in support of the Blue Mountain Forest Planning Effort. So this is National Forest inside and outside of Oregon, even other counties outside of Oregon. And that was my goal, was to just dive in, be a strong supporter, make sure we shed light on this. How do we get to a new forest plan instead of this long-term cycle of litigation and push and pull where we don't land it and we don't have management plans that can be implemented? And once again, we basically keep spending years on it. And now we're spending money on it at Deschutes County in support of a mountain, you know, Blue Mountain Intergovernmental Effort, the committee, that hasn't landed yet, which is very frustrating for me. So, and I think you came in saying, oh, those forest plans, those don't matter because those are never going to work anymore.
Well, no, no. No, what I said, what I said is that is, I don't anticipate that Blue Mountain Forest Plan getting done anytime soon. And no one would like to see those get done more than I would because those plans being completed stand in the way of actually getting the Deschutes National Forest Forest Plan revised.
Yeah, well, that's what this logic was.
Right.
If we could show what a plan could look like, to get it landed at least, you know, whatever the plan is, then we can work on the next plan. So that was my goal of years ago, very much. And then the Eastern Oregon Economic Summit, looking forward to that. And we haven't been able to do that. So my point is, I wouldn't support, you know, these other amounts that are proposed here. But it does get me back to a basic membership and partnership with the Eastern Oregon Counties in support of Blue Mountain Plan.
I felt that their
I was giving you a logic about
I think
Their lobbyist was excellent. I thought that Rocky did a very good job explaining. I thought he was very enlightening. Remember when we could do the other, every other call? And I, you know, I really appreciate having that opportunity to hear what is truly going on, so.
So, we're possibly in a spot where, I mean
If it's two to one vote, that's fine.
Yeah, that's what I was
But I, I
But maybe it's clear that
I'm not, I'm not persuaded by anything that we've discussed so far.
That was kind of my conclusion just now, too. Maybe we proceed with that instead of, because we will do the same thing and probably come to the same conclusion.
Okay, well, you guys can, you can go ahead and make your, make your motion and have your vote.
Okay, so I move we pay the $12,500 for the 2021 EOC A membership dues.
And I'll second it. So it was a good discussion. And I mean, we're just laying it out there. This is exactly what we're seeing. So it's been moved and seconded. Any other thoughts? So, seeing none. Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
No.
And Chair votes yes. So that's annual membership in Eastern Oregon Counties Association. We have been in a spot where we've alternated dialing in. So if you're interested in any of that, please let us know, or if you're not. You know, as I say, I'll acknowledge that since it's this dynamic, that we should either acknowledge it as a full board meeting of the Deschutes County Commission, or just one commissioner attend, and update status to the other commissioners. You know, so I'm just acknowledging that.
I guess I would, I would touch on that for a moment to say that we discussed, we discussed how all three commissioners could be engaged in groups such as this who do not, you know, are not interested in having us publicly notice their meetings. So they only want one of us to participate at a time. And the, I thought the agreement was that whichever commissioner was participating would bring back to the group what was being discussed and what needed to be addressed or considered. And I don't feel like I've really heard anything about what this group is doing for Deschutes County in the last four, five, six months. So, you know, my, my opinion is based on that. And, you know, you can, if someone wants to come back and try to provide, you know, more information on the benefit and value of this group to Deschutes County, I'm happy to, I'm happy to hear it. But based on what I know right now, I don't see the value of this investment.
Well, I think the very interesting thing about the BIC group that has been formed is the fact that they now have the Nesspierce Tribe, they have Warm Springs, I mean, and the Confederated Tribes of the Umatilla. And the importance of having that entire group, I think they've really tried to make it so that they will get a plan. It will happen. They've really brought the community together. And, you know, it's amazing because you look at Warm Springs, and it's the largest reservation in the state. And it's quite a ways from the Blue Mountains. And yet, it was really important to have them participating. So they have been.
And the reason for that is because a huge amount of the area covered by the Blue Mountain Forest Plan is ceded tribal lands from the three tribes that make up the Confederate Tribes of Warm Springs. It's not about their reservation. It's about, you know, their very firmly legally established rights within that area.
It was really amazing, actually. I just picked up the Confederated Tribes of the Umatilla have a monthly newspaper. And it happened to be at my mom's retirement home. And so I picked it up the other day, and it was amazing to get to read all the accomplishments of the Confederated Tribes of the Umatilla. They're, they're doing so well. And they're a new appointee to the federal government. You know, I think that's really, he looks like an outstanding person to be serving. So I was happy to see that Governor Brown had appointed him, and then he actually was appointed federally. So they were, you know, it was a front-page article.
Great. Okay, so at this time, that was our last agenda item. I did have a note here for other items, which was the topic that we started off our meeting with, was the Redmond Dollars for Bethel Hamien. And that will be discussed on Monday, September 27th. Another other item was a request or an offer for, invitation for us to join the Adult Treatment Court graduation ceremony. But that's at 3:00 on Monday, September 27th, which we've just kicked a couple of items to you. So I don't think we're going to be able to be there, once again. So I'll let Lisa Nichols know. Thank you for the invitation, but we'll be busy at that time. Is there any other?
And it's still at the fairgrounds, is it not?
Yes.
Which is great. It's wonderful that we have that socially-distanced, enormous courtroom.
Well, and the other, I mean, I think it's virtual also. I mean, just if we wanted to put a video of the three of us attending it for a half hour, that's possible. I just, just thought about that as you mentioned that. But I think we'd have plenty of action items for that day.
We're probably going to be pretty swamped.
Yeah, I still haven't made it to one of those.
Oh, it's pretty special, yeah.
So I would like to do that at some point. But it doesn't have to be this, this Monday.
Okay, so anything else, other item?
Well, I'd just like to share that it is a welcoming week. Many members of our immigrant community and the city of Bend formally have engaged in declaring that this welcoming week, trying to emphasize that our community is inclusive and welcoming towards, you know, towards immigrant populations. And I participated in a, in an event on Sunday on behalf of the county. And there are other events going on all this week, if anyone's interested in participating.
Great, thank you.
And I did get actually feedback from Summit BMC. They're working on the monoclonal antibodies treatment. Hopefully, it will be all ready to go by the 1st of November. But they think that they've really only seen perhaps as many as six people a day to qualify for that treatment. And so it's going to be in the evening from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. This is a ways away. But my question, too, was, well, what if you're a healthy 50-year-old? You don't really meet the qualifications. You have to go to your primary care physician, or you can actually go to their urgent care, too, if you're not getting better. And in that case, if you're not getting better, you possibly could have this treatment. So I think it's just nice to know that other people in the community are stepping up. So please keep that in mind.
All right. Couple of other things I did yesterday was Sun River-Lapine Economic Development Meeting. So that was online Zoom meeting. We just talked about some of the, like, the, remember, one of the questions is, you know, what is the value of the parcels out there? You know, the land owned by the people? And that was one of the discussion items. The dollar, it's been set to $1.75 per square foot for those half-acre, one-acre parcels. Sometimes we get different bids. So that's going to be kind of documented. The idea is to put like a one-page pricing philosophy document together. So we can look at it, too, and make sure we're on the same page with the city council and the economic development folks in Lapine. Also, from Lapine, I went to Redmond for the Redmond Economic Development Board Retreat in the afternoon. So that was in Redmond, hybrid meeting. So some people in person, some people remote. And just talked about, you know, kind of making sure that this was the annual retreat of just aligning the committee, making sure the group as a whole, we all kind of know each other and working together. And there was a breakout of, you know, membership and advocacy committees, a little bit of committee work happening at the Ready Board, Redmond Economic Development. So, yeah, that's why, that was yesterday.
And then we actually don't have the Sisters Edco meeting this month. Caprielle Foot-Lewis has been from, she has a new position. She's going to be taking over for Carolyn Mies on Business Oregon. So it just turned out that we would not have our meeting next week. And we were all saying congratulations to her. So, thank you for our job well done. And she'll still be working in our community, so it's great.
Yeah, great, okay.
I guess, I guess one other thing I would share is I was approached by the Higher Education Coordinating Council, I believe. I'm sorry, I'm not remembering the full acronym. But they asked me about my interest in participating in a, in the advisory board for the newly forming Oregon Conservation Corps, which is one of the, was created by SB 762 to essentially help organize conservation corps around the state to work on, you know, organize groups of youth to work on fuels reduction projects as both, you know, valuable fuels reduction projects getting done, but also as workforce training for the state. And I, I'm not 100% sure that I'm going to participate in that. But it was very interesting. And I think it would be, it would probably be helpful for us to have a representative from this region if we want to initiate a core program like that here.
So, that's great. Congratulations. Heart of Oregon Corps is kind of one of those organizations who naturally basically has done that kind of work. You know, this would be a different version of those. But they've definitely done, you know, teams out in the woods with youth. And that's their mission.
Yeah, they were the ones who, they were the ones who recommended me to the Higher Education Coordinating Council.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, so definitely my goal would be to help, help ensure that groups like Heart of Oregon Corps here in central Oregon are able to respond to this opportunity. And ideally, to secure a piece of this $10 million that's available this biennial.
Okay, anything else, other item?
I don't have any, but I think Eric has a couple.
Okay, good.
I have a new draft letter for the RV park.
Okay. So this is four addresses, correct? Four property owners, I think?
Thank you.
I'd forgotten about this.
Initially, it was four. There's a total of seven. But the four were identified because they're eligible for the 2006 HB 2006 item. But this letter is a little bit broader, so it could be sent to all seven. So this incorporates input from Commissioner DeBonne and Commissioner Chang. And Peter Gutowski's on his way over as well.
Yes, so as I say, I like the idea of if somebody wants to understand the big picture, they could watch the video of that discussion, which is, you know, is our memo also that brought us to that point, you know, the community development memo. And then, yeah, you know, sending a note saying that the state legislature passed a bill that allows emergency shelter cited in a rural residential zone property. I still kind of struggle with, what does that mean? I mean, we could send a letter to my house, too, and say that. What would that mean? You know, so, but that was the theme of what we talked about last time. Oh, by the way, if these are rural residential, they could qualify for a, you know, shelter opportunities.
And don't forget, they can actually build ADUs, hopefully, if they're over two acres and they're rural residential.
In future, yeah.
So.
But I mean, that just makes me question, what, what were we doing when we send a letter to somebody says, oh, congratulations, you could be, are we asking them to welcome? If it's not a money, if you can't add value to your property by doing that, why would we even do that? So, as I say, I was struggling with that last bullet point.
I, I think this is, those are fine additions to this letter. We definitely want to support RV park owners in learning about, you know, their pathways for expansion. And I do want them to, you know, know that there is this kind of current unique opportunity provided through HB 2006. And if they are, I guess I would just also ask that if they're interested in exploring that, the county has, you know, through our work with our numerous jurisdictions, homeless service providers and others, we do have an interest in, you know, proactively learning about whether there are, you know, people who are interested in partnering and offering emergency sheltering facilities essentially around the community. So, you know, I, I think this, this letter works. I would just request that we add, you know, for that third bullet, we add kind of an openness to exploring those opportunities with people.
So when you say opportunity, what do you mean?
What I would picture is if someone is interested in, we see, for example, the city of Bend offering, you know, offering landowners funding to host a, you know, a village or managed camp type facility. And I think if we knew that there were landowners outside of our incorporated cities who are eligible to do such a thing, who are interested in doing that, that there's probably some matchmaking to be done to pair them up with, with entities who want to pay for that work. And among those entities, you know, Deschutes County might be one. But, you know, we haven't, we haven't made any decisions to that effect. But, you know, knowing what your possibilities are is part of deliberating on, you know, where you're going to spend your dollars.
So that's more of a message to anybody who has a rural residential zone, not just these few parcels possibly.
But these are also, these are, this is a unique subset of landowners who have, who understand how to provide infrastructure for temporary states. I mean, you know, yeah, we could send you a letter. Are you interested in hosting a, like, a tiny home village? Or safe parking for, you know, people who are nursing along an old RV? But you don't have
My neighbors and see how that goes.
You don't have, you don't have anything like the infrastructure that's needed to do that right at the moment. An RV park does. They, you know, this is, it's, it's, it's not very different than their, it's not very different than their current business model.
So you think there's profit involved in giving up some land that's currently under that kind of zoning?
I mean, I, I do not, I would not anticipate any, I would not anticipate any business dedicating a portion of their essentially asset land to a purpose that didn't compensate them for that. I don't know whether you call that profit or not. But I would certainly expect that people would get paid for, for hosting such a facility.
So when would, when was House Bill 2006 signed into law? Because if it's already sunsetting in nine and a half months Because if it's already sunsetting in nine and a half months, you know, trying to get something accomplished in nine and a half months is, other than a baby, I think it's pretty hard to do.
But, yes, please, I don't know.
It was just passed this, this session. They passed different versions of the bill in prior sessions, and each time it's been a really short period, like nine to 12 months, maybe up to 18 months at most, to take advantage of it.
Okay, so probably it will be renewed then, more than likely?
Good question, I, I don't know the answer to that, but it has been the last couple of sessions.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, I just, it just seems like such a short term, why don't, you know, in business, you want to have certainty, and wouldn't it really help if they did this for like 36 months, you know, where you could actually, you know, get prepared, plan, and implement something, and, you know, know that you had enough time?
And I do think the key is, it just, a complete application has to be submitted by that date, it doesn't have to be operational or implemented by that date, if I recall correctly.
Thanks.
That's, that's nine months to, to put together a, a plan, or a business plan, basically. And I would, I would fully expect, you know, because this keeps getting renewed, to me, that signals that there's opportunities to tweak or expand upon the policy the next go-round, you know, and, and that's, that's part of what this, well, I mean, this first bullet alludes to that, you know, we understand there's challenges to expansion and upgrading RV parks, and, and we're interested in talking to the local delegation about that, you know, more broadly than just for the purposes of hosting, you know, emergency shelter, but that could be, you know, essentially, that, that provides an entry point for policy discussions about this.
So, that first bullet point, is that saying we will have a, a Community Development Department will hold a meeting for existing RV park owners to learn, so the park owners to learn? So, where, are we, is this one meeting for multiple park owners, or we're offering a sit-down meeting, like?
Yeah, and that is one meeting for, for multiple park, park owners.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so, I mean, I think it reads pretty well, I mean, we discussed the concept of this House Bill 2006, I mean, thank you very much for that discussion, just going back and forth, figuring out, you know, I mean, one of my thoughts is, you know, for a, for a private property owner to receive a bill from your local government saying, the state, congratulations, the state's going to allow you to put in a, you know, whatever the terminology might be at the time, you know, emergency shelter citing.
Remember when we had...
Out of the blue, is my point, it's like, what?
I think it needs a phone call, truly, I mean, we're only...
You're already talking to one already.
Yeah, we're not talking about that many people, because remember, we had 113 people that had homes built prior to 1945, and so we sent them all letters, you know, saying, oh, you can build an ADU, it's legal, and what, that didn't really happen, did it? But we sent them letters, and, yeah, personal phone calls really could go a lot further.
I ended up on the phone with the one at Cascade Meadows RV.
Yes.
And it was, him and I were able to connect, so...
But, but this goes back to the question of whose job, you know, and this, this speaks directly to the, you know, the question that Counselor Brodmann and Counselor Perkins, you know, posed to us in their letter. Whose job? Is it to kind of identify, you know, entities who are interested in partnering in something like this? Because, you know, whoever's job that is, you go ahead and assign it to them. If it's in the city of Bend, we know who the, whose job it is, but we don't know whose job it is out, you know, outside, so, I, you know, I'm, I'm with you, you know, a personal phone call would be great, but whose job is it?
I'll do it.
Okay.
I'll call a couple of, I'll call the one in Sisters.
But, I mean, think about it, if somebody buys a private parcel, I, oh, I'm going to start an RV park, I probably need to make a profit on my capital investment, and then your government calls one day and says, oh, by the way, congratulations, you can cite a homeless shelter, shelter here.
This letter doesn't say congratulations, this, this letter says, hey, you got an opportunity if you're interested.
But what's an opportunity? Congratulations, we're going to take some of the most challenging housing situations in our community and offer them to be cited on your private property.
And you can take it, and you can take it or leave it. I mean, you, nobody who's...
But it's just offensive even getting that message from your government.
I, I don't, I don't see why it has to be presented in an offensive way.
Well, offering it at all is doing it, yeah, so, now, I mean, I, I wasn't going to go here, but now I'm proposing we don't even provide that last bullet. So, so remember, this is the concept of a low barrier or a high barrier shelter. A high barrier shelter is market rate with rules and enforcement or whatever, you know, rules and expectations, low barrier is come one, come all. So, are we talking high barrier or low barrier here? Maybe we're talking in two different domains.
I don't think we, I don't think that is determined yet.
Well, so I would say it's not low barrier.
I think you would want to, you would want to find, find out whether someone is interested at all in this possibility, and then you would want to know, you would want to discuss with them what they're interested in doing. I mean, you're, you're being way more prescriptive about what, what, you know, you're being way more prescriptive about what, what you perceive we're imposing on people than I am. I'm, I'm just, I just want to let them know that, you know, under recent legislation, this is one more thing they could do with their land, and if you're interested in that, by the way, like, it's a, it's a major problem for our community that, that we're motivated to, you know, try to address.
Well, I mean, yeah.
I mean, that's, if you don't want to do that, that's fine, or that's, you know, whatever, I, I, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, I like getting engaged with the RV parks to see if there's opportunities to make them premier facilities for, you know, short-term housing opportunities for local folks as well as, you know, vacation and tourists, so, I mean, there, there's a vision there still, because I think any capacity is going to help our community all across. So, that, that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, and then, I mean, kind of with the, the new direction that this letter is going, you know, talking about like how we can speak with the legislature about changing law to remove barriers to expansion and upgrades, if, if that, if we want that to be the emphasis of our letter, I think we should be sending this letter to mobile home park owners and campground owners as well. And that's a much more efficient way of doing this, so, it, it's, it's about intention. I mean, you know, and I, the, that intention, you know, seeking legislative change to facilitate these, you know, these facilities that, you know, meet certain needs in our communities, I, I am 100% supportive of that, but like, we should do it for all three of those land use types at once, as opposed to one, one at a time.
How about we just stick to this letter for those couple, couple that are out there, see how it goes, and then maybe do it again in the, you know, couple months or whatever? I mean, because we're not going to set ourselves up for a big legislative push for the short session, you know, maybe there'll be something.
We do, I do, we do have a resident that does have, I believe, like 42 acres, and they really did want to put a manufactured home park, and we were really thinking about if we could come up with some kind of legislation for that, because, what, we haven't had one of those since the 1970s or something? I mean, hasn't it been forever? So, you know, meeting with Representative Zika might be helpful, and he seems to have the pulse of housing.
Yeah, I, I, if they're going to do anything this short session, dealing with housing and dealing with homelessness, I mean, those are, those are pretty high legislative priorities. I don't, I, I wouldn't shy away from the idea of, of trying to get some legislative concepts in the pipeline.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I'm not opposed to that either. I was just trying to, so this could go all over the place, and I'm thinking if we just send this letter to the few addresses we started with, that'll get us started, you know, that's, that's where my thought process is. Well, if we, if we think we have opportunity to do something legislatively, get clarity, if we have support by some, you know, because there's some key land use members of, of our legislature that will tell us yes or no to even ask the question. I mean, that's my experience, you walk in, they're like, nope, don't even ask, or yes, let's maybe look at this this time, so, and we know how to get to those folks.
Yeah, I don't, you know, the, the emphasis of the first bullet here, I don't know why we wouldn't reach out to campgrounds and mobile home parks as well, but...
Well, so maybe there's a different letter here, and it is just that first bullet? Or the first and second bullet?
Okay.
We're kind of going in circles again.
No, like, first and second bullet to campgrounds, RV parks, mobile home parks. Third bullet, a separate communication...
That'll be explained as along the way, yeah. Or, especially, go ahead.
As a separate communication, you know, just, you know, making people aware of an opportunity and asking if they're interested in exploring it.
To anybody with rural residential lands at this point, then, you mean, or?
No, I, again, the fact that, the fact that RV parks have the kind of, you know, like a, like the, the type of infrastructure and setup that would be needed for some kind of, you know...
So, that last bullet...
Shelter village.
Part of the discussion after we engage with these property owners, see if anybody responds, get engaged, call some of them, and then mention the last bullet in passing, or send it to them in a separate letter.
It, I really, you know, my, my desire was to, to, you know, have these people be aware of this opportunity early, so we could actually explore it with them if they're interested. If you don't want, if you want to kind of like bury that under the other stuff, I, I'm happy to just try and, you know, make time to make four phone calls myself.
We can divide...
Because it doesn't seem like, it doesn't seem like you're comfortable with this concept, so, I, you know, but that's fine.
Well, I think we should maybe just get a full-page ad in the paper and say, if you own rural residential land in Deschutes County, and you want to host an emergency shelter, please give us a call. I mean, to find anybody that, because then, then if you put a plan in place, even, you know, you're talking utilities, whatever, but that'd be interesting to find out if somebody wanted to do that.
Remember one of the teeny homes in the city of Bend, they had the teeny homes, but they were looking for two and a half acres, and I don't know if they found it or not, that was a couple of weeks ago when I was aware of that, but they were having a really hard time finding just a bit of land in order to put those teeny homes up on it.
Yeah, the, the, the project that Chuck, Chuck Hemingway was heading up, they had, they had dollars, they needed a site.
Did you get all that?
I got all that, it sounds like the current direction is remove the last bullet, keep the first two bullets, but broaden the audience to campgrounds, RV parks, and mobile home parks.
That works, because then we're starting the conversation, and we'll go right down from there.
And then the HB 2006, there was discussion about sending a separate letter to just those four, or Commissioner Chang calling, calling those four, or...
Yeah, maybe, it's a phone call for that topic, that makes sense, because...
Or I could, or I could send them a letter for, yeah, I, I'd prefer to not call them completely out of the blue, so maybe I'll just send them an individual letter first, and then call them.
Well, and I've already talked to one of them.
I thought there are actually seven. Was Sisters on the list or not?
Well, yeah, go ahead and put a little matrix together, and we'll work through it.
I know it has an incredible potential, it had, what, 11 cabins and, you know?
I think there was only four that were rural residential zoned, so if we're talking about, you know, essentially, a, you know, a newly allowed use, then we only want to talk to the, the folks who, who are eligible. But if there was more than four, you, you can correct me as well.
There were a total of seven, and then four of those were rural residential zoned, isn't that right?
Yeah.
So, and maybe Nick can help with this, what are the possibilities for an emergency shelter cited on rural residential zoned properties? As in, could it be a community of tiny homes, or manufactured homes, or, I mean, what, do you have any idea what that could even mean, could, could mean? What are the opportunities?
As long as it falls within House Bill 2006, the emergency shelter, I think there's a lot of flexibility. It still has to comply with building code, but the other key element is it has to be operated either by a government or a nonprofit organization, somebody that has at least two years of demonstrated experience operating a similar type of a shelter, so, it, it's not the case where just anybody can, can start a...
Couldn't be a tiny home village at market rate, because that's what I was kind of thinking, that it's, it's not that.
Yeah, I don't think so, I don't think there, the, the law doesn't speak to charging or not charging, I think that could, could, could not happen, it's just that the other provisions of the, of the law, and Peter, I don't know if you have...
That's right.
Yeah, so, but it, it does waive a lot of the, the regulations for, particularly with land use.
Well, so it could be market rate, then?
It, it could be market rate, provided it, it meets, there's, I don't know, seven to 10 different standards in the law of what it still must be, what, the key really one is going to be either a public entity or a nonprofit entity that operate the, the shelter, or an organization with at least two years of demonstrated experience.
So then, I mean, now I'm dreaming a little bit about what's possible, I mean, if, you know, if our local church says we'd like to take these 10 acres and make a tiny home village and charge $1,000 a month for, you know, whatever, this structure, and you can finance it, it doesn't have to be a subsidized effort at that point, you know, that's, I mean, there may be possibilities.
But if, but if the intention of the, so I 100% agree that anyone who is going to host, any private landowner or, you know, an entity like a church who's going to host something like this, they're going to need to be compensated. But if, if we're talking about creating emergency shelter for people who are homeless, the, they're not going to magically be able to come up with $1,000 per month themselves. I mean, there's...
You want this? Well, so if you get up out of bed in the morning...
We're, we're talking about, I mean, we're talking about housing on the one hand, and we're talking about, like, shelter on the other hand, and HB 2006 is about shelter.
That separates us, that takes away your, your hope to move forward in the world if you don't think that you could be stabilized as a human being, get a job to bring in $1,000 a month, and then get overhead to be able to buy some food and clothing, you, you're, I'm just saying, the mindset is separating us if you think that some people aren't capable of that.
No, 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 people, people, people need to be sta, you know, people need a stable foundation to get there, right? This is not, this is not meant to be their home for forever, this is meant to be a transition...
And now we're talking about tiny home village, which is a long-term, that's what I was envisioning.
Okay, but, I, I mean, again, Nick was describing how this, this needs to be kind of under the umbrella, under the management of either a government entity or a, you know, like a, a certain qualifying nonprofit organization, so...
So, it sounds like, here, congratulations, you're, you're allowed to live in this, this low-cost situation, but...
To pull your life together, and you're being sponsored to do this by some service provider.
You can buy an $800,000 house in Bend someday? That's why I was thinking of a long-term tiny village, that you just, that's where you live forever.
Okay, but that's, that's, I don't think that is what is addressed by this piece of legislation. I have a long-term interest in affordable housing and a variety of affordable housing types as well, and that's why I was just pushing and pushing that if we're going to send a letter like this, that it include mobile home parks, right? But if we're on to talking about what can we do with HB 2006, that is not, it is a, it is a shelter policy, it is not an affordable housing policy. To get to the other stuff where we get, we get flexibility to be able to do, you know, expand mobile home parks, expand RV parks, that is a separate legislative effort, and that's why we're, that's, the other thing we were just talking about, is like, what are we going to try and work with our legislative delegation on for the short session?
What's the lady that wants to do her... What's the lady that wants to do her cottage cluster?
Yes, I've already met with her.
Oh, I've talked to her six years now.
And I'm talking with Jack Zika on it too, so.
Maybe she can do it now, though.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, it's something we were working on with Jack.
Please, this is our Wednesday afternoon Let Her Fly idea session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Peter Giotowski, Planning Manager. I just wanted to share some observations. First being that I think the, the power of this type of letter, to the extent you want to expand it to include not just RV park expansions, but campgrounds and manufactured home parks, is if we do it in relatively quick order, we will basically be able to ascertain who might be interested in taking advantage of an expansion and use that interest as a basis to engage our legislative delegation. Because we need changes in state law to really provide the certainty to allow these types of expansions to occur. And that's noted in the first bullet. But if we had the, if we had the informational meeting that's hosted by CDD, we can certainly talk about the, the opportunities and challenges that are associated with expansion. But if we get a, an indication that there really is an interest, knowing that there's going to be a heavy lift with, with the built environment, I, I, I'm projecting, but I'd like to believe that that interest coupled with the board's support for exploring legislative concepts that would allow for these types of uses. And we, I know our communications director, Whitney Hale, has been reaching out to our lobbyists to try to engage our legislative representatives to have this conversation. But the legislative, the short session is going to be here relatively quickly. And so I think you're going to, you may want to get that feedback as soon as possible to accelerate or emphasize that message. So that was observation number one. And then it seems like the, the emergency homeless shelter subject to House Bill 2006 is almost a separate conversation because you're subject to that sunset clause, which of course could be extended. But that's a, that's a parallel process, a parallel commitment. But almost outside the, the sense of urgency of getting a headcount of who might be interested in, in exploring an expansion. And if so, we need to, we, I mean, not in the larger sense of the county organization, need to be engaging our, our legislative representatives so we can make that persuasive case. So I offer that just as someone who's been sitting in the background here to the extent that that's helpful in, in the dialogue.
I think that sounds like a good way to proceed.
Okay, so are we sending a letter to everybody? Get back to the specifics.
Just don't send it to Doralee Kinggen because she, she's got her plan that we're working on.
Would she consider modifying her plan to kind of work within, to work within legislative, you know, things that can be accomplished legislatively? Because if I remember correctly, she was talking about one unit per acre, which is, you know, that's a bigger stretch and pull of, you know, state land use policy than, than maybe some of the things that we're talking about here.
She's cut it back somewhat from originally. I'd have to review it again. What is it, Senate Bill 708?
I'd like to proceed as, as Peter just suggested.
Well, I was just trying to get clear again. I got defocused about what exactly we're going to do. That's why, if you can help a little.
What I heard the board is, say is, we'll take this letter, drop off the last bullet point, send it out to campground, mobile home parks and the RV parks. Peter also suggested that the information meeting, there could be a couple of different types of, based on, I guess, the interest. And then separately, for the House Bill 2006, there'll be a separate letter either from Commissioner Chang or staff. And then that would be followed up with a phone call from Commissioner Chang, is what I heard from the board last.
Except I want to call the Sisters one. Since I drive by it a lot.
Well, after we, after we work on this letter, if you want it to be from both of us, I, I would welcome that.
Sure, that's fine, if you don't mind.
So the letter to the four will be from the both?
The 2006.
Yeah, the 2006 related letter. And, you know, because the letter is intended as a, as a warm-up to a phone call.
Yeah, once we get the, you know, addresses and the phone numbers and we'll have a little matrix of people, see who gets engaged, we can just have conversations too. I mean, you know, as I said, I've already talked to one of them, so.
One down, six to go?
Four.
Well, but there are actually seven, aren't there?
Yeah, but only four were rural residential zoned.
Oh, gosh.
Okay, anything else?
That's it?
There it is, okay. So, do we have an item? Executive session or not today, it looks like?
There was something on the list.
Yeah, executive session if the board wants, but I didn't.
Oh, no, that was Paul, executive session, sorry.
Yeah, so there's another topic that we could do if we're interested. It was an email sent, if you're up to speed on that.
Which one?
Well, that's, how about we go to an executive session to discuss an item? If you can help us, Eric, ORS 1926602. This litigation? H litigation.